I call to order the special meeting for the District 64 Public Denial School Board. Today is Thursday, June 3rd, 2021. The administration has asked us to go into closed session under 2C2 regarding the employment, employment, appointment, compensation, discipline, performance of employees.
Let me actually, it's 2C1, sorry.
2C1, yes, okay, thank you. All right, so do I have a motion?
We need a roll call.
I think we have to have a motion first and then a roll call.
Soto.
Second.
Okay, so Tom had the motion, Gareth had the second. Any discussion, I'm going to close session under 2C4. All right, and now let's do a roll call vote. Please, Phyllis.
Soto.
Here.
Waitovitch, here.
Pearl.
Here.
Kennedy.
Yeah.
Selas.
We're just taking a ten minutes down.
So there is a ten minutes, and then there's also, but you're approving that we're going to go into closed session. So you should say yes, we agree, or no, you don't agree. So maybe we can just start.
Okay, so why don't we start that vote over again? So we're just doing a roll call vote to go into closed session. All right, so can you start that over, Phyllis? Thank you.
Soto.
Yes.
He has.
Waitovitch, yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Selas?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Lindsay, yes.
All right, so motion here is, we are going to go into closed session.
All right, the board is back from closed session. The board was in closed session for about 30 minutes under 2C1. Today is Thursday, June 3rd, 2021. The board is here for their special board meeting. All right, how about Phyllis? Can you take the role?
Soto.
Here.
Little?
Here.
Kennedy?
Yeah.
Lindsay, here.
Waitovitch?
Here.
Pearl?
Here.
Selas?
Here.
All right, the board is present. All right, let us start with the pledge allegiance, and I think Phyllis is going to lead us. Thank you, Phyllis, for leading us in the pledge. And here, the board is back for our first in-person meeting from over a year when COVID started. So it's good to see everyone in person, and we're back, and we're figuring it out again, being back in person. But it's nice to have this group together, so thank you, everyone, for being here. Anyone have anything to share at any of the schools that they want to share that they've It's exciting that we're having end-of-the-year celebrations, you know, so it's exciting that students are going to participate in those as closure. All right, so let's continue on with our agenda, and we'll look at public comments. Each speaker is given three minutes to address the board. Comments may be made on almost any matter related to the operation of schools. Each person appearing before the board will be treated with courtesy and respect, and the board requests the same in return. In light of the privacy of personnel and student matters, commenters are strongly discouraged from speaking about individual staff or students during public comment. Commenters are instead encouraged to first raise such concerns privately with the board president or administration. The board, however, recognizes each commenter's First Amendment rights. Thus, it will not prohibit commenters from speaking about individual staff or students subject to well-recognized exceptions under the First Amendment, such as obscenity, threats, fighting words, or incidents to violence, incitements to violence. All right, so now we will have public comments on non-agenda items. Any public comment on non-agenda items? Nothing via email, thank you. Okay, so let's look at public comment on agenda items. Any public comment on agenda items? Okay. All right, so we will continue on and look at the meeting agenda. So if we want to look at the agenda, any board members have any amendments, additions, Okay, seeing none. We will move to on our first agenda item, which is the main purpose of this meeting, and it's to talk about full-day kindergarten. And know that the board, this is just the first of a conversation on full-day kindergarten, so we don't need to ask every question. This is a first of several conversations on this topic. All right, so I'll turn it over to Eric.
Okay, thank you, Denise. We're very excited tonight to be talking about full-day kindergarten. I'm sure, as the board knows, this has been a discussion in the community for several years now. And in fact, part of our presentation tonight is talking about a survey that was done with parents in 2013, 14. So certainly, it's been a discussion for quite some time. We're excited tonight to just kind of walk you through some of the pieces. I'll be honest, we're going to give you a lot tonight. And as Denise alluded to, if you remember, we felt the board needed three pieces of information before they could make a decision on full-day kindergarten. One was the five-year facility plan. We did that last time. Obviously, you need to know what all the plans would be for these options. And then next time, we'll talk about enrollment and where it's going. And then you can think about all three of those as we put together in what we want to do about full-day kindergarten. Okay, next. Okay, so, you know, we are bringing four options tonight, but in the end, if we're only talking about kindergarten, then you really have three options on the table. Do you maintain the current model that we have, and nothing needs to change? We're just happy with the way it is. The second option would be that we should have full-day kindergarten, and it would all be at one location. So everybody in the district who attends kindergarten would come to one location. Or the idea that would we do little add-ons to all the schools so that they could have full-day kindergarten at their schools? I'd like just the board to remember that in Illinois, the state law does say that we have to offer half-day kindergarten even though, even if we were to move to a full-day model. So just keep in mind that that always has to be there as a consideration of something that we would have to do. We formed a kindergarten exploration committee this year. We have gathered feedback from parents. We have researched. We have debated items. We have crunched numbers. We've looked through plans. We've talked with principals. The kindergarten teachers on the committee were very valuable in their perspective that they were able to give us. And obviously, all of these things, we're going to have to consider moving forward. Okay, I'll turn it over to Lori, and she'll start taking it from here.
Okay, great. So one of the things that, can you hear me? Okay, great. One of the things that Eric mentioned is that part of the scope of the committee's work was actually conducting a kindergarten survey. So we administered the survey in February of this past year, and the survey included four questions. And the four questions were actually the same four questions that we asked of parents in the community in 2014. The four questions asked about parent interest in four options. So the four options are full-day kindergarten at your neighborhood school, at your home school, right? Full-day kindergarten at one location in the district, like Jefferson. Tuition-based kindergarten at your neighborhood school. Or tuition-based at one location in the district. So responses were recorded as either yes, probably yes, undecided, probably not, or no. And Pete actually ran the survey link in our District 64 e-news, so it was accessible to community members who might not yet have children in District 64, or have students who are graduates. We had a little over 1,300 participants, so 1,352 people participated. And of these, 60% of the respondents said that they had pre-K students or younger students in their families. So a good portion of the people responding actually have a sort of a stake in the outcome of the decision. So in general, 83% of people responded yes, and another 6% responded probably yes when we asked about their interest in free full-day K at their home school, at their neighborhood school. So 2% were undecided, 8% said no, and, I'm sorry, 2% said they were undecided, 8% said no or probably no. 6% of that was no. When we asked about free full-day kindergarten at one location in the district, 53% said yes, 21% said probably yes, eight were undecided, eight said probably no, and nine said no. And the last two options, as I described, introduced tuition. So 39% of parents said they would support full-day kindergarten if it were offered at their home school and they had to pay tuition. Another 24% said that they would probably support that. 11% were undecided, 8% said probably not, and 15% said no. There was less support for a tuition-based program at one location, like Jefferson, with 28% saying yes and 22% saying probably yes. 13% were undecided regarding this option. Another 13% said probably not, and 22% said no. Hang on one second, we've got a sticky... Sam, I'm afraid we may have lost our battery. Let's see. Whoop, there you go. So Eric, can you go actually? Actually, you're perfect right now, but we did skip that slide. If you want to linger there for one minute. Okay, and then you can go on to the next one. So this chart actually summarizes the data, and it includes data from parents that have a current pre-kindergartner, and that data is listed in blue. So you can see that the data for pre-kindergarten parents is fairly consistent with the data for all families, but that pre-kindergarten parents have a higher level of support for full-day kindergarten, with the exception of the option, which is Jefferson tuition-based, right? One-location tuition-based, where those results are about the same. So in terms of themes across the data, similar to 2014, when we administered this survey, the majority of people surveyed really strongly prefer a tuition-free offering at each home school. In 2021, options with no tuition were ranked as the highest. In 2014, interestingly enough, the survey results showed an equal preference for home school tuition and Jefferson no tuition. Three of the options, though, received significant support at this most recent survey administration from pre-K families, and those were home school no tuition, Jefferson no tuition, and home school tuition. And again, the Jefferson tuition-based option was ranked the lowest, but 50% of families still supported this option. In addition to surveying families about full-day kindergarten, we surveyed our kindergarten teachers about the challenges of half-day kindergarten. And our District 64 kindergarten teachers reported that it's challenging to design developmentally appropriate activities because of the time constraints within the half-day. And these include activities like play-based activities or self-initiated exploration. They also said that they noted that the experience of multiple settings can be really difficult for some students. So when students are in District 64 for half-day kindergarten, and then in another setting for the other half of the day, if there are different expectations in those settings, the kindergarten teachers noticed that the kids have a challenging time transitioning. There really are a significant number of transitions, even in a half-day program, including transitions to encore classes, so classes like music and art and PE. And that can have an impact on core instructional time as well during the day. And finally, the time constraints can make it challenging to address the Illinois learning standards, which are extensive and they're rigorous. In English Language Arts, we have a dedicated daily block of instruction, and that includes reading, writing, word study, speaking, and listening. And we typically focus daily on one to two of these areas. And math is 30 minutes daily. So there's a limited opportunity for small-group instruction and individualized attention. And then science and social studies activities are also limited due to time constraints in the half-day. But the research summary around full-day kindergarten is actually really interesting. So we'll take a look at this now. And we'll start with a little background on full-day and half-day in general. So when we look across the United States, 39 states and DC require districts to offer kindergarten, either full or half-day. But only 19 states and DC require children to actually attend kindergarten. 98% of American students attend at least a half-day kindergarten prior to first grade. And among those attending kindergarten, the percentage was 81% in 2018, and that increased from 60% in 2000. So over the course of those 20 years, we see almost a 20% increase in the number of students attending full-day programs. In Illinois, and Dr. Olson mentioned this at the start of the presentation, if a district establishes a full-day kindergarten program, we are also obligated to provide a half-day program for those families who want it. We're one of six districts in our area that currently offer only a half-day program. One of these six districts actually offers a separate half-day enrichment program to all students. Compulsory schooling in Illinois begins when students are six years old, so Illinois students are actually not required to attend kindergarten. Nearly 80% of Illinois districts offer a full-day option. And across the state of Illinois, nearly 71% of students attend full-day kindergarten. And kindergarten has changed dramatically since we were kindergartners. And some educators have said, oh, kindergarten, it's like the new first grade, right? And there was a paper actually that was published out of the University of Virginia several years ago that noted some of these changes. So kindergarten, around kindergarten right now, there's an increased belief that academic instruction should actually begin prior to kindergarten. So students have now preschool experiences that are focused on some academic concepts. There's an increased belief that students should exit kindergarten with the ability to read basic text at a minimum. There's increased time devoted in kindergarten to math and to literacy, and there's decreased time typically devoted to art and music and math. We talked about this a little bit earlier, but there's been a movement away from some of the self-initiated activities that we might remember, like dramatic play, or the water table, or the sand table. Remember that. So kindergarten has evolved. In terms of the academics, full-day kindergarten students have been shown to perform better in kindergarten first grade and second grade in reading and math. But interestingly enough, those academic benefits are short-lived, and they're typically shown to be eliminated by third grade. In full-day kindergarten, there's increased one-to-one student and teacher interactions and child-initiated activities, and it's likely a function of the longer time that they're together in school. And teachers who transitioned to teaching full-day kindergarten from half-day reported that they had more time to get to know their students. Full-day kindergarten teachers, again, as a function of time, probably reports, or they report spending more instructional time in whole groups, small group, and individual instruction. And then finally, full-day kindergarten students are less likely to be retained. They have better school attendance. But there's no difference in the number of special education referrals between half-day kindergarten and full-day kindergarten students. The research regarding social-emotional impact is also mixed. So for example, some researchers have found evidence that full-day kindergartners exhibit poor self-control and interpersonal skills. Other researchers have found that FDK students are more likely to demonstrate self-confidence and the ability to work and play with others. But they've also found that full-day kindergartners are less likely to have a positive attitude towards school. So self-regulation is really an important skill that's associated with increased achievement, right? If you can self-regulate, you can typically focus more and perform better. So research suggests that there's a relationship between play and self-regulation. So the more opportunities students have to play, the better they develop their self-regulation skills. So greater involvement in learning and socialization can result in more opportunities to practice and develop self-regulation. And you can crosswalk this to the fact that there's more time to play in full-day kindergarten, or at least structure play-based activities, activities that are developmentally appropriate for kids. And this may have some implications for student achievement. There are also some practical and financial considerations. From a practical standpoint, full-day kindergarten provides support for working parents because they have fewer logistics to plan for. There are fewer transitions for students. Full-day kindergarten students have the opportunity to participate more fully in the community. Sometimes, full-day kindergarten in a community is perceived as an added value for potential homebuyers. But from a financial standpoint, full-day kindergarten can require significant ongoing expenses, specifically related to staff and materials. It often involves construction costs due to the challenges of limited space. One benefit might be that full-day kindergarten allows us to intervene more fully with kindergartners who are struggling, and this could potentially reduce costs later on, although this reduction could certainly be less significant than other costs. So just looking at all of this, unfortunately, the research doesn't provide us with clear guidance, right? Because there are both benefits and challenges related to full-day kindergarten. One of the things I want to share is that there are certainly gaps in the literature, and the literature, the research itself sometimes presents varied and actually conflicting results, right? And a little context might explain that. When full-day kindergarten first became a widespread practice, students were enrolled in full-day, students who were enrolled in full-day kindergarten were often identified as being at risk, right? They were struggling learners, and so they were offered a full-day kindergarten opportunity. So much of the research has been done with this population of students. Also, in all of these research studies, which happen over a period of time, right? It's difficult to control the variables. So it's hard to account for child circumstances, family circumstances, caregiver circumstances, what's happening with students that other half of the school day, when they're outside of the school day. There are also variables related to program structure that can impact the research. So class size has an impact. Certainly, instructional materials has an impact. The teacher's experience can have an impact. And of course, you know, the level of parent involvement can have an impact. So some of the researchers would assert that there are significant benefits connected to full-day kindergarten that they would describe as unmeasurable, right? So for some of the academic gains that I explained, standardized assessments were used to measure the impact of full-day kindergarten. And what some researchers would suggest is that everything that counts can't necessarily be counted, right? So there's this question that's lingering in the full-day kindergarten research around whether or not there are benefits that we haven't been able to clearly measure yet. So just in summary, because this is kind of a little bit of a mixture of benefits and challenges, I think full-day and half-day programs have both advantages and disadvantages. And the length of the school day is just one dimension of the whole kindergarten experience. Other levers that impact student learning are student, are teacher quality and the curriculum. So in general, there are benefits and challenges to both, and the research suggests that both half-day and full-day kindergarten provide a solid foundation for your start to schooling. And I think Eric now is going to take us through the next phase, which is looking more closely at some of our options.
Okay, so now that you have the background, we'll start talking dollars and cents and how these pieces would actually play out. Before we get to that, I think it's important just to note that what we explained to the committee is, of course, it's never as easy as only focusing on full-day kindergarten because there's a lot of other things that have to be taken into consideration. So there are two big ones. One is Jefferson, that Jefferson is in desperate need of repair. Both Rhonda George and Luanne met with me last summer and the previous summer to say, we cannot guarantee that this school will last you through the school year. We just have to make sure you understand that. And so every year we go without doing Jefferson just is increasing the risk that we're going to have to have something happen in the middle of the year, and then we're going to have to deal with it. So really, if the board wasn't interested in full-day kindergarten and wasn't interested in ESC, I feel at the very least we have to do something about Jefferson because that's desperately in need. Beyond that, ESC then kind of follows up in second place on that list. As we've shared with the board before, every time it rains, the basement floods, the building is not ADA compliant, so we cannot have any official meetings there because we cannot provide the proper venue for it. You, even just walking up the front steps, you can see that it's falling apart. The board, a couple of years ago, decided that they didn't want to keep putting money into ESC because they were starting to talk about other options. And so we haven't, but we're desperately in need. I think the other thing about ESC is the fact that if you've been inside and can see, I think the administrators are okay, but the other staff that are there are very on top of each other and very compacted. And part of that reason is some of those people used to be in the basement, but we didn't feel that they could keep working down there due to the conditions, and so we brought them upstairs. And so really, we're talking tonight about Jefferson, we're talking about ESC, and we're also talking about full-day kindergarten. So I just wanted to make sure that you understand, and what we tried to explain with the committee is that as a board, you have to take in everything to make these decisions, and they certainly understood. So I'm now going to switch to, oh, I guess I just go through the four options first. So first of all, option one that we're going to go through is that we take care of Jefferson, but we leave everything else the same. We would still just continue our kindergarten program as we have before. Option two would be that we take care of Jefferson, but then we also move ESC to Jefferson and include that in the renovation of Jefferson. But yet, we would still, again, maintain the half-day kindergarten as we always have. But yet, we would still, again, maintain the half day kindergarten as we always have. Option three would be that we would do the Jefferson upgrade, we would move ESC over to Jefferson, and Jefferson would become a kindergarten center where all kindergarten students from the district came to one place. And then option four is to do those things, but the difference here is that now we're doing little additions onto each of the schools in order to keep kindergarten still at, where everybody's still at their home school. So I'm now going to introduce Studio GC, our architectural firm. They're going to start walking through the options in more detail and starting to show you diagrams and, you know, some of these pieces. What I would caution the board is that Studio GC has already presented to us multiple options for each building, but we felt that that would be too complicated for tonight, so we chose one option. They're all very similar, but if the board were to eventually go forward with this, you would need to see all of that and know exactly what was happening. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rick Patricek and his team.
We're all set up on table.
Please. Just like a team.
Like a pot.
Right. Words we didn't know before.
And we are also going to pass out our packet to you tonight. This has the options that we're discussing in it. The district also maintains that what we're showing you is important enough.
Rick, can you just get by the mic?
I'm sorry. What we are showing you is important enough that we feel it needs to be confidential to some degree, and we are asking you to return the packets to us. You may mark on them and put your names on them. If we come back with other information that's required, we will bring those packets back, and you can have your notes at that time also, so.
For the new board members, just so you know, we don't display the drawings of our buildings online, we don't send them out, we don't do anything of that for security purposes, that somebody could examine the blueprint and potentially, you know, do something to a school, so that's why we're passing them out to you this way. Okay.
So let me first do some introductions. I am Rick Patricek. I'm the architect in charge of all the work in the district. To my left is Marisa Urban, working in our office, and also Amy Pazinsky on my right. So they've worked extensively, not just on this, but in the last probably year and a half. We started out by doing an audit with the principals of their actual utilization of each building. And it wasn't just the K through five buildings, we also did the middle schools also. So we used that information in our kind of kickoff to get the knowledge that we wanted to be able to understand what the issues were at the K through five buildings, as far as capacities and how they were shifting people around and everything. So from there, we've taken the five schools and, for the elementary, and reviewed and developed possible solutions. As Dr. Olson said, we did multiple options for schools, but we then had meetings with the principals and assistant principals for each school. We asked them to review those options and pick an option that they felt comfortable at this time would be something that they could possibly move forward with. So, and that's what we're presenting to you tonight. What we consider this is options three, which address the kindergarten, ESC, and remodeling of Jefferson. And then option four is remodeling Jefferson with the ESC, and then the home school additions to accommodate the kindergarten facilities. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Amy real quick. She's going to give us a quick rundown on some of the numbers, and then Marisa's going to walk us through all the plans and everything.
So for option one and option two, you guys do not have plans for them because we're not going to focus that much on it, but for option one, to just upgrade Jefferson, which is approximately 46,000 square feet, we used a cost per square foot number to figure out what it would cost to basically gut the whole building, keep the exterior walls, but new roof, new ceilings, lights, floors, secure vestibule, room signage, interior doors, things like that, and we came to a total of just over $9 million for that. And then for option two, same thing, Jefferson upgrade, everything that would have just included the $9 million, except extended day kindergarten remains at Jefferson, and then it includes a small, approximately 4,300 square foot addition to accommodate the ESC offices moving over to Jefferson. Again, with a square foot, cost per square foot for new, and then a different cost per square foot for renovation, that comes out to $10.6 million. And then if you guys want to start looking at your packets, that would be for option three. And again, the floor plan, Marisa, will start talking about it, but what this includes is, again, the Jefferson upgrade, same thing as in option one. Extended day kindergarten is no longer at Jefferson anymore. It includes a second floor addition to accommodate the ESC offices and tech department with a first floor secure vestibule for the ESC. And then, as you could see, the numbers, so for this option would be a total of 24.9 million, with just the kindergarten costing approximately 19.8. And you'll probably ask, well, why doesn't that equal the $9 million if you take out the Jefferson upgrade and then add on the kindergarten? And it's because it's kind of a domino effect. We would actually have to renovate portion of Jefferson to get your total of 25 kindergarten classrooms. There's three classrooms in Jefferson that we would need to renovate to get those 25, and so that would domino effect down to, those classrooms would then get relocated into a different part of Jefferson, which would then have to be renovated. So if you were to take those numbers separately, that's why the kindergarten and the upgrades don't exactly equal the $9 million.
Can I get a little more clarification on that? Because I still don't see why it would be, sorry, that drastic of a difference.
Well, we've taken some of the dollars associated with the remodeling and actually placed it to the kindergarten itself.
Which is, which is, the question I'm asking is, why would you allocate those funds to the kindergarten side and not to the, not leaving it at the renovation of?
Of Jefferson.
Jefferson side and/or the ESC side? Why was it decided and determined to allocate it towards the kindergarten?
To the kindergarten? Because the spaces and other items within those costs for doing those renovations for the kindergarten spaces would be moved over to the kindergarten cost estimate itself.
So it's just where we decide to move the money to?
Yeah.
We really know, like, we could move it over somewhere else.
You could, but the way we looked at it.
If the ESC doesn't go to Jefferson, because there is no plan here of the ESC not going to Jefferson.
That is correct.
So if the ESC doesn't go to Jefferson, then the cost of converting Jefferson into a full day kindergarten drastically goes down because now you don't have to do any additions, you don't have to do any other, any other, except for the, except for the remodeling.
The remodeling itself.
We would need an addition.
You would still, you would still need an addition for the classrooms for the kindergarten.
So that's, I guess that's where I'm getting, when I did review this, that the number of classrooms that were necessary to do full day kindergarten, whether it be in one building or whether it be in the home buildings.
Right.
Was not made clear right off the bat. So it's hard to identify how that works and how many classrooms does Jefferson currently have and how many can it currently house. I physically went to that school, so I know how it, I literally remember in my mind exactly how it goes and where, walking down the hallways. So that being said, I would, that's the one thing that jumped out, jumped out at me really quickly when I went through the packet, is the allocation of kindergarten dollars in this option as opposed to another option, and whether, you know, and how we determined to move them along there or not.
Well, because even if we just put the kindergarten over there, we have to add classrooms. The total requirement of classrooms for kindergarten is 25, whether it's at Jefferson or at the other buildings in the district. It's a combination in the other five elementary schools of, some of them have the ability to have three classrooms turned into kindergarten spaces, they may not be three currently, or, and then we would only have to add two. Some of the schools could not afford that, so we have to add three. And that, that condition is offset by when we start moving other spaces around in the existing elementary buildings to accommodate modifications to other programs that we felt needed to be moved so that we could gain another full classroom or something for a kindergarten space in the existing building.
Jefferson currently has how many classrooms?
I'm sorry?
Jefferson currently has how many?
How many classrooms? We could tell you that in a minute, probably.
And did you take into consideration re-organ, restructuring those classrooms to where the sizes are appropriate for kindergarten classrooms and the amount that we would need?
There was work discussed with the principal of Jefferson with regards to doing some of that modification to equal out classroom sizes based on what their needs were and everything.
Because if I'm not mistaken, Jefferson has pretty decent sized classrooms throughout the whole.
Some of them are, and some of them are divided up somewhat currently, some of them are undersized, but we did, we have looked at that to try and equal things out if that should come.
But just to answer my original question, and I'll let you move on.
Okay.
The allocation there was somewhat subjective, and we just chose to move stuff over.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Number of classrooms?
There's seven, there's 17 at Jefferson. That's just classrooms, not counting offices or resource rooms, so 17 full sized.
And would we need all those offices and resource rooms?
What's that?
Would we need all those offices and resource rooms for just a kindergarten?
So Tom, you've got to remember the preschools there also at Jefferson, and that would remain at Jefferson. So if you look at your plan here, that they handed, the yellow.
Does the plan say that the preschool would stay?
The preschool stays there, that.
EC is the early childhood in yellow on the Jefferson.
So on the, if you look at the diagram on the right, you can see all the yellow classrooms are EC, and then because of, you know, the nature of our preschool program, we need OTPT speech. We also have our child find there, and we also provide our speech services to children that are not going to preschool within our district but are entitled to those services because they are children that will be attending our schools. So there are other, so we need the space for all of those classrooms also.
And then finally, the choice to demo a portion of it instead of just adding on to it?
We felt that to accommodate the classrooms properly, size-wise and how everything would lay out, it was more appropriate to demo those areas that we would be looking at because the building itself does not allow us to expand the way we actually need to do that and make it a better project for you and the flow of the building and everything. There are situations with regards to existing conditions for fresh air, for the roofing, just some of the other things that are, you know, I don't remember off the top of my head. I think the building was built in 54 or something.
Issues we would not have by adding small additions to the other schools as opposed to demolishing sections of those schools?
Well.
I'm trying to get an apple and an orange situation here, and it seems to me that we're not.
It's a little bit, maybe an apple and an orange. It's not, it's not clear, you know, exactly where that breakpoint might be that you wouldn't have to do demolition. Actually, we just felt like it works much simpler and straightforward and effective for the whole program itself to be able to accommodate the facilities appropriately.
We're adding, it seems to me, we're adding 15 classrooms to the five other schools, roughly.
Roughly, yes.
My quick view of this. We're adding, how many classrooms to this school?
Go ahead.
Seven?
So we're adding 22 new classrooms to this school and demoing, so if you.
No, 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 when I, when I say adding.
Yeah.
New, new structure is not going to be 22 new schools, or 22 new classrooms to Jefferson.
On this plan.
At Jefferson.
Correct, on this J point three sheet.
So the addition is going to be 22 new classrooms.
22.
For that addition that you're adding on there.
Correct.
Okay.
And part of the reason for that is, at the elementary schools, they already have an office for a social worker, for a speech, for the, you know, all those things that all would have to be created. You know, we don't have to make new music rooms at the elementary, art room, all those things, but all of that would have to happen if we had a kindergarten center.
All right. So most of my questions are to clarify for anyone else that's, you know, listening and to understand.
Sure.
There's a significant investment in Jefferson to do full day kindergarten at Jefferson.
Yes.
Almost exactly the same as if it would be if we were to go to doing additions at our other schools. Assuming that the, we did an addition at Washington recently. How much did that addition cost us?
I think it was about $5 million.
Yes.
With renovations to the building also.
Right, and that, that was a pretty significant addition. Four classrooms?
It was four classrooms.
Four new classrooms that were able to get us a few more than four. Because of reconfiguration and such.
That is correct.
So going off of those numbers, five times 15, or five times five, 25.
Right.
Which is where you're landing. So, and we know from history that we can actually build at that number. And the only thing that I see that wasn't addressed in this presentation is, if we choose option to go to home schools, our benefit is having enough classrooms for our kindergartners. If we choose option to go to Jefferson, we free up a ton of classrooms in our five other schools for future growth and no, no need to put additions on those schools if we ever, if our population ever grows.
That is correct.
So I would have, I would like to see a value to that when we're looking at these numbers, because when I, someone who might not have thought of that may look at this and say, "Well, dang, 24, 24 million, 25 million, I'd rather stay at homeschool. I'd rather have my kindergarten at homeschool so I could take my kid right down to the corner." But if we look at potential projections where we might have to be forced to do another $5 million addition to, the same one we did to Washington, to Franklin, to Carpenter, to Roosevelt, to Field, now we're like, oh, wait, on top of the 24 million to get full day kindergarten, we're looking at another 20 just to accommodate room constraints. So if we can get a value on that per classroom, then I think that would make this decision much easier.
You kind of, you kind of hit the schools that are at the busting of the seams too. Franklin.
Unfortunately for me, I've been here long enough to know.
Yes, exactly.
And to see that as a potential problem in the future.
And I, and I think we know that, you know, Franklin, it seems like over the last few years, they've had to move a lot of classrooms around each year because they've got an impact that is kind of following them through the school right now per grade, so.
In the presentation, I would have just liked to see, if we do home schools, there's a potential additional 20 million to taxpayers for future additions for overcrowding issues that won't be addressed by that plan, that option, but would be addressed for free under option. That won't be addressed by that plan, that option, but would be addressed for free under option of going to Jefferson.
Yeah. And we'll, we'll get into that a little bit more next time when we do enrollment. Um, just to give you kind of a preview is the next couple of years, we anticipate slightly climbing. But then it's going to go off and we're going to start to decline, um, for quite some time. So, um, but that is important obviously for you to make the decision. So yeah. Thanks, Tom.
Okay.
Um, just to go through what you were looking at for option three, I am just going to talk briefly about the plan that was in front of you. Um, just so we all kind of know what we were, uh, so that right side of the page is the part of Jefferson that would be kept. We would be demolishing the west side, which would be approximately fifteen thousand square feet. And then adding an addition, which is what you are seeing in the green and the gray. There are three kindergarten classrooms that you can see that are kind of in that multi-color space that are going to be within Jefferson. But then as Rick was saying, we did talk with the principal of Jefferson and all those other colored spaces with the main offices, the NPR, speech, and, uh, the EC classrooms were spaces that she said that they did require to stay at Jefferson and would like to be at those sizes. Um, and we did demo that western side of Jefferson in order to then get an additional twenty-two classrooms to get our total number of twenty-five. Um, and then you will see there's an ESC secure lobby, which has stairs and an elevator in it going to the upstairs. And there is an NPR, an art room, and then a few intervention spaces. And this is just one example of, of how the addition could lay out for this. And if you flip the page, you will see the second floor, which is that ESC, ESC space. Um, we have worked with administration and talked about how many staff are in the ESC space. Um, to kind of come up with somewhat of a plan of how those offices and how all of the staff members would be able to be within that upstairs space. And so current, existing ESC is ten thousand three hundred and seventy square feet um, in the existing ESC building and the total proposed right now, uh, in this plan number three is thirteen thousand five hundred square feet to give, uh, a little bit more space. So that is what you guys were looking at for.
Also moving the tech department up there, which is currently at Jefferson already. So that three thousand.
Correct.
Being taken up by them.
And most important, almost everyone with windows.
Yes.
Almost everyone above ground.
Yes. Some, some nice views up there.
Yeah.
So then Amy will, uh, explain a little more of option four.
Do you have any other questions on option three before we move forward?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So then for option four, again, um, that would include the upgrades to Jefferson. Um, extended day kindergarten would no longer be needed. Uh, there would be a first floor addition of a secure vestibule for the ESC district offices. And then the, the western portion that in option three we were demoing would be renovated to become those ESC support spaces. And then all the full day kindergarten would be at each of the individual K through five schools. So you'll see the, um, two different numbers and it's again, because like Eric said, we had presented multiple options for each school and every option had a different size addition with different, uh, areas of renovated spaces. And so just based off of an average of what those spaces were, we, we came down to those twenty-three point five to twenty-five point nine million for the, the project total.
So if you flip to, it's J four in your packet, you will see Jefferson and what we are recommending for Jefferson, which includes all the upgrades that you saw in the earlier slides. And then we are not demoing any of Jefferson. We would be adding around an eight hundred square foot, uh, ESC secure lobby to access that ESC space that would be on that western side in the existing classrooms. We would renovate that space so that it would work out for all of the ESC staff. And, uh, again, the total ESC, uh, square footage is around ten thousand three hundred square feet proposed. Of that size around fifteen thousand five hundred. And as Luanne mentioned, that does include, uh, moving the tech department into also that space from where they used to exist in the northeast, uh, corner of Jefferson. Um, I'm now going to go through those options for each of the five elementary schools. It is going to get a little repetitive. So I'm going to, um, you know, if you have questions, let me know. Um, but we are going to start with Carpenter. As we've all kind of mentioned a few times, we had multiple options for every elementary school. We have met with the principals, the kindergarten committee and the administration a few times. And this is the initial, you know, number one pick for now. Um, so starting at Carpenter and just to explain kind of the sheets that you were looking at, on the left side you see demolition that is happening and renovation work in the gray and then the dash red. On the right, orange is a new, or orange is the renovated space and green is a new addition. If you want to orient yourself, there is a key plan in the bottom right corner of this page. And there's also a site plan for each school on the following page. So at Carpenter, we have two existing kindergarten classrooms. We need to get to a total of five at every elementary school. So we are recommending that we do an addition of two C of C spaces and relocate the two C of C spaces that are currently in that southwest corner. So that all the kindergarten rooms can stay in a, in a pack at the corner after talking to several kindergarten teachers. That was the, the preference. Um, so each kindergarten classroom you can see in orange is getting a new, uh, a renovated toilet room that would be ADA accessible. A lot of the schools have small toilet rooms that are no longer up to the ADA accessibility codes. And then you will also see that we are taking out that, uh, room labeled OTPT and the other for primary challenge because students currently are having to go into kindergarten rooms or into psychology rooms to go to those spaces. We are pulling those additionally up to that new green addition where we would put those two C of C, the primary challenge, the OTPT, a mechanical room just because of the size of the addition. And then they actually at Carpenter would be gaining a resource room or whatever the principals would find as a useful use for that space. Um, if you flip the page, you will see again where that is in a site plan of Carpenter. Um, the orange dash line shows you, um, what is happening for renovation work. The green box shows you what is happening is for new addition. Um, it's a total of five thousand square feet of renovated space and about four thousand square feet of an addition. Some of these, uh, site plans you will see have, uh, a note that says that the path needs to be rerouted. Um, some of them you'll see it does overlap a playground a little bit. So, um, I'll try to mention that as it, it's happening. Um, we move on to Field if you flip to the next page. So Field has three existing kindergarten classrooms that you can see being renovated on the left side. And then they need to additional to hit their five. Um, we are recommending that the kindergarten wing of Field be demolished and completely taken off that side of the building for a brand new addition of five kindergarten classrooms to just get those all in that brand new space and provide them all with the same amount of square footage. We then would turn the existing kindergarten one oh four into two intervention rooms again so that, uh, the children don't have to go through one intervention room to get to the next one. Um, and then there are two additional intervention rooms, uh, within the new addition. And each kindergarten classroom is getting a new ADA toilet room.
Yeah. And I think I'll just jump in to say, this is a good example and you'll see it in several of the buildings that these kindergartens have this extra room in the back. And I think once upon a time, it was thought that a kindergarten teacher might take a small group back there and work with them. But as education has evolved and we need intervention people and psychologists and all these pieces more, then, um, those rooms have changed to be intervention for all kids. And so what happens is these kindergarten teachers, about every thirty minutes, you're going to have three or four fifth graders coming in, three or four second graders or whatever, walking to the back to do their work. And so a lot of this is trying to take care of some of those situations as well.
Correct. Real quick, would any of these additions, would, would any of the demo and new additions be set up and built to accept a second floor in the future?
Uh, we have not programmed that at this time. Uh, what I have found out in the past that it's, it's a little bit difficult to do that because if you, you end up doing this, an addition for a second floor, uh, you end up having to close down the space below you while you're doing that construction anyway. And especially in a school situation, um, it, it's difficult because you're always fighting the timeline of coming back to school. Having to tear off the roof, getting the structure up and getting everything prepared that you would have to do for the spaces below you that you weren't really building. Uh, you'd have to tear everything out and redo that also at the same time. Um, I've had this similar situation in even municipal buildings where it was initially designed to have the possibility of doing that, but then when you take a good look at it, the loss of time of the use of the other spaces doesn't really make it, um, the correct way to look at it.
So we wouldn't be able, over a summer, be able to.
It would be really, really tough.
Get a second floor up and a roof on and get the main floor back functioning while we work on the, on the inside on weekends or something?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, again, if you flip your page, you will see the site plan of Field. Um, you will see where that outline is for the kindergarten space to be demolished. And then the green box would be that option that is the new addition of five classrooms. Um, again, like we were saying, there are a few of these that overlap with a path or overlap, uh, a little bit of an asphalt playground. And that would be, you know, restriped and reworked such that a pathway still goes in that same general vicinity. Um, go ahead.
I think, uh, Tom, one of the things, you know, we discussed when we were looking at the renovations of, of Field before also, the question came up, where would we put an addition on the building again? And this is the location. It's a little bit different than what we initially talked about. But because you're so landlocked at this school and there's a couple others that you have that issue, we felt this is appropriate.
The, the reason I asked the question is because of what you just said and I was going to wait for you to get to it.
Right.
We are starting to get landlocked in some of our schools.
You are, yes.
And if we go this direction, we may be forced, if, if this is the direction that everyone agrees to go in, we may be forced to build our additions to accept second floors and suck it up and figure out how to do it later because we're running out of actual land to put additions on. So if five years from now, the numbers don't go this way and they go back this way and the future board is talking about putting an addition on Field and now we're like, oh my God, we have nowhere to put it because we didn't plan for it. And, you know, the water reclamation district is telling us, or that, you know, you can't do it. There's, you don't have enough, uh, water runoff. You don't have enough of, you know, water detention. Now we're talking about millions of dollars of putting in tanks in parking lots and ripping, you know. So I think because we are starting to get landlocked on a few of our buildings, not all of them, but on a couple, we may want to, if we choose the route of putting additions on our homeschools, we may have to suck up and incur the cost of making sure these buildings can afford a second floor. Or maybe build them with the second floor there, just not finished. You know, we had that situation where we went into that one attic in Field and we were praying that they built it the right way so we could just slap a floor in there and get classrooms and they didn't. So we may have to take that into consideration.
Um, so moving on to Franklin as the next page. Um, Franklin has two existing kindergarten classrooms. Um, and then we are going to add an additional three to hit that number of five. The two existing will stay where they are and just get new, uh, toilet rooms, just expanding their toilet rooms. And then we would add an addition, as you can see in that southeast corner of three classrooms and a mechanical space. And you also see that we have the auditorium and stage, uh, in gray and being demolished on one side. We would have that sloped floor to get flattened and then turn that space into an NPR. So it is a nice multipurpose room for Franklin to be able to use for, um, their gathering use. So, uh, renovated space, that's about fifty-four hundred square feet and then a new addition about fifty-two hundred. And you will see, uh, if you flip the page, the site plan for that showing approximate renovation and kindergarten renovation work. And then the new addition, and again, this shows that there will be a path reroute happening, um, over around those, those trees on that southeast side. Um, to the next page, um, talking about landlocked schools, uh, this is Roosevelt. And you will see, um, if we're going to kind of look at the top part of the page, we're talking about it, the three existing kindergarten classrooms. Um, one is kindergarten in the AM and art in the, in the PM right now. Um, that room would stay a kindergarten classroom. We would just renovate the toilet room. You'll then see that we're, uh, renovating the auditorium slash music room slash instrumental space. Um, and turning that into two new kindergarten classrooms with a speech and a special education room associated. And we are reallocating that instrumental to be corridor and storage space. Um, and then you will see that the kindergarten classrooms that are currently one oh one, one oh two, and then that grade one, one oh six, um, that's where we're pulling the special ed and speech rooms from, just like, um, we were talking about earlier. Making sure kids don't have to go through a classroom to get to those spaces. Um, and then, uh, adding a toilet room. And the addition would be because we would now be losing in music and art space and instrumental space. So if you look at your key plan or flip the page to the site, that small green box on the site is about the only, uh, place that you can have an addition at Roosevelt, uh, due to just, again, uh, it being pretty landlocked due to playgrounds and the track and then just the existing site context. Lastly, we have Washington. So Washington has three existing kindergarten rooms. There are two in the kindergarten room. There's one in the addition currently. Um, and we are again proposing similar to Field, that the kindergarten, uh, wing get demolished, uh, at least ninety percent demolished to make space for new intervention rooms and then a four classroom addition. And then we would move the kindergarten classroom that's currently in the, uh, twenty twenty addition to be in this pack. So that's that orange box that you're seeing is the renovated space. So that all five of these kindergarten rooms are near their intervention rooms in that southwest corner of Washington. Which again, you can see if you flip your page to the site plan, um, you can see the existing kindergarten demolish work, the kindergarten renovation work, and then the new addition, which, uh, in this plan you will see it does overlap slightly with that baseball diamond. Um, we would work with the school and the park district to get that relocated.
Correct. Good luck.
Tom, you can negotiate that.
No.
We'll sign you to that.
Not with the baseball people.
Um, we're going to switch to a different presenter. So are there any questions that you have for Studio GC right at this moment? Obviously, we can come back to them at any time, but just before we move on.
So you're playing a match with twenty-four, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So can you bring all of yours back?
Absolutely.
Or do you break down for us?
Sure.
All we did for them. I don't remember what it, we discussed before for the Franklin stadium auditorium. You know, the discussion for the how I see this here with the proposed renovation of not turning it into classrooms, but just doing the NPR, which I think you would like not to, right? Did you decide only level Franklin and not?
I'm, I'm not recollecting that we ever made a decision on Franklin, but I think we talked about it sometimes and I think you're bringing up those points.
Oh, just thought I think it would be helpful just to see the school, our school breakdown for, you know, the amount of things like that. If you wanted to say, no, don't do this, get a regulation to the stadium auditorium, or don't get a review at the line. Maybe that would help the discussion.
Uh, just, we, in those conversations we've had with the principals and assistant principals, some of those things were requested like that. Uh, to be able to give them more versatility within the whole building itself. Uh, but that's something that, you know, we can continue looking at.
And then for teachers, we had a discussion, would be the extensive Washington renovation where they said that, you know, parent committee, that was very school specific. I don't know if I'm going to think that that was just, you see that happened up until this point, you know, for these third round drafts. I don't know if that's what the future.
Typically when we've, typically when we've taken away, when we've taken away auditoriums, we've had significant changes in addition to multipurpose rooms. And in this scenario, that doesn't seem to be happening for Franklin. So that, just bringing that as a option.
Right. I'm just envisioning a lot of.
When we, when we take away their arts area, we offer it to them somewhere else. And I just wanna make sure that, you know, Franklin has that when that's taken away as well.
Yeah.
Or before we make any major decisions.
Yeah, I mean, part of it, something we have to think about is I don't wanna get all these parents and teachers together if really there's not options.
Right.
You know, like, they're not gonna tell us something, you know, one way or the other. But in a case like Franklin where I think it would, I certainly hear what you're saying.
I have a question. If we do the additions at every school, how many, is it over the course of two summers, three summers? Do you, could I assume it can't all be done at once?
Eric read your mind.
Yeah.
He brought that up to us during our discussions and everything. It it really depends when we can start construction. We have to deal with both Niles possibly and Park Ridge with regards to zoning requirements and stormwater management. If we can hit the timeframe correctly, we could do this in a, I think I said roughly sixteen months. And if we set it up appropriately, we would only impact one school year really. So, but it's all with regards to the timing of when we would be able to actually start construction. So that, I've discussed this with Eric and Luanne, that, you know, whatever we do, we wanna try and hit that timeframe so that that can accommodate the one year of impact. We've done it before at other districts. It's worked out great, but we have to be able to meet the timelines of all the requirements too. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Has everybody put their name on their packet so you get the same one next time or whatever?
And Ashley, Rick and your team, you could stay there.
Okay.
Because Elizabeth's over here now, so.
Okay, okay.
I think I think we're good. Any other questions?
And then just out of curiosity, that timeline, you were talking about like hypothetically, what did you envision as a possible start date when you were discussing that sixteen?
Well, if you wanted to do it this year, I said to Eric, I said, July or August looks really good.
Wait, what do you mean by doing it this year? You're saying that we can?
That we would have the go ahead to start doing the engineering for the site work and everything. That's the biggest thing we have to.
You wouldn't have bids and everything ready for us to start construction by July?
No, no.
I'm like, man, you got real good over the last year.
I got a lot of help. No.
So so timeline, if if this was something that we would decide to do one way or the other, we would wanna make our decision by when for us to start construction, the minute school's out.
I I have talked to Eric about it's probably between a four to six month review process for the engineering approval for stormwater management and everything like that. So if you back that up and everything, you'd wanna be able to start building by spring of next year so that that's gonna impact that next year of school. But then the following year, you would be able to turn everything back over to the district as new facilities, renovated facilities.
So if we, if we by November got you everything you needed, buy in from everybody, voted, figured out how we're paying for it, all good, by November, would that be enough time for you to get it bid out and start? So I think that's the date that we're looking for. What's the, what, when do you need to know from us, the latest?
I would say.
I think June or July.
Yeah.
June or July of this year.
Yes.
Yes.
So June or July of this year, we have to have this all wrapped up for us to start September, to start spring of twenty twenty two. And the completion of the product project wouldn't be until August of twenty twenty three.
Correct.
So it would be an entire year and some
Right.
to complete the project.
Correct.
And and a lot of the work would be done over the summer times and some of the work would be done while we were in a real school year.
Similar to what we we have just finished with Washington. I just wanted to start the engineering earlier because that's where we had some issues. You know, we were able to get the building open with the renovation work and the addition finished kind of shortly after school actually started. The course of the pandemic kind of helped us in that sense that we weren't, because we were held up getting the addition started. So that's why I wanna push it up a little bit so that we're making sure we meet that deadline on the addition work. And the renovation work, I'm not so concerned about because we can accommodate during the actual school year. If we've got the building's additions moving forward before school is out and we're really just tying the building in to the addition at that point, it it will flow very well that way.
I ask the question solely because this this conversation is going to excite many people in our district. And I just kinda wanna let the people know whose kids that are in preschool, that they probably won't have, it won't be ready for them. But the ones who are a year before that, you know, or two years, might get, you know, might get the benefit of this because we are looking at a, if everything goes perfectly this summer and somehow, some way we get this thing approved and funded and good to go, that it would be, it would be school year beginning twenty twenty three
Right.
before we would benefit from full day kindergarten.
And and could I ask, is option three and option four, the timeline you just gave valid for both of those or would they differ?
Um, I would say it's probably the same.
It's just you're dealing with multiple sites versus.
The impact on Jefferson is much bigger in in the one option, but I I do believe it can still work that way.
Gareth, we would have to then with Jefferson, we're working with the village of Niles. So it's one building, one village. When we're doing the elementary buildings, now we have five buildings that we have to get through their engineering department and through
MWRD.
MWRD, Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. So and each building is gonna have its own unique issues in terms of where we're gonna be able to put water detention, if it's going to be, most of it's probably gonna have to be underground because of how our buildings are done. And the process of, you know, doing all five obviously could potentially take longer than when you're just trying to do one building.
And am I correct in that Park Ridge is more difficult to work with than than Niles in terms of the building planning department, in terms of?
Say it again, Gareth.
No, yes, no, you're correct. Niles is much easier.
Much easier to work with.
It's not an issue of which one is more difficult. It's the certain things that Park Ridge has to address and deal with, Niles does not. Niles has a little bit more experience in, you know, their their departments and their, you know, they're larger. They're, it's just easier for them to manage some of this stuff. So I'm not, I wouldn't say that one is more difficult than the other. I just think one would be a little easier for us to deal with and that would be the Niles option. For what the reasons that were just addressed, which is we're dealing with one location, one school.
Right.
One approval for, you know, water, one approval for drainage, one approval for this. Also, you're staging construction in one place, not in five different places.
Right.
You're, you know, in your scenario, you've got, you've probably got five different crews doing the same job. Where if we're doing it at Jefferson, it's, they're all in one place. One crew doing the brick, one crew doing.
Are there any issues though with Park Ridge from from my experience of going on the library board and them having, making certain requirements to retrofit in Park Ridge? Sprinklers and other requirements around easement, around access safety requirements, fire doors, etc. Are there gonna be any issues like that that could arise from the option of different?
There'll be, per either village, those requirements will be the same. And those those are not zoning requirements, but those are building component requirements that are true for any construction. And the size of the addition dictates whether or not you have to sprinkle it. So that's what we have to go by.
But I guess my question is, is any of the five gonna trigger that requirement?
As far as addition wise?
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember what the largest addition is.
So Rick at Washington, it did not, right?
Uh, Washington, it did. We, because yes, we did.
We sprinkled the new.
We sprinkled the addition at Washington.
But you didn't have to retrofit the whole school.
We didn't have to go back, Gareth, though, and you're talking about what happened almost with the library.
Yeah, there's a difference, I understand, if you if you build something new versus if you renovate in Park Ridge and 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 the requirements they put on on terms of if you renovate a certain percentage of a building, then you have to retrofit the whole building and it gets treated.
So we're actually, except for the interior of the building, we're actually permitted through the ROE, not through the city of Park Ridge.
Right, okay.
Would the Washington, would the Washington addition trigger having to, since we just did an addition to Washington, would putting another addition on it trigger us to have to bring the rest of the building up to up to current specific codes?
No. No.
Only the additions, they would like to see you do that, but it's not required. Okay, thank you.
And I just have one question, I apologize if I missed it. What happens to the ESC buildings?
I'm sorry?
What happens to the ESC buildings? What goes there?
Do you want me to talk about that, Eric?
Sure.
So Tom will remember this little story. About three years ago, when we looked at redoing the front steps on the building, we started an exercise on if we should sell the building, lease it back. Should we sell the building, lease property and everything? And any type of leasing option obviously was very expensive. We did have our building appraised at the time and it appraised for about five.
I'm sorry, but I don't think we should be talking about what it.
Oh, that's right, I can't talk.
I don't think we should be talking about what it was appraised at, if there's a possibility that we're gonna be selling it.
So we had the building appraised?
We've had the building appraised and we also had individuals come in and look at what the cost would be to, you know, renovate that building. At that time, we were looking about eight hundred to a million dollars. Understanding now construction costs have gone up, so that's what we were looking at in terms of remodeling it. However, you still don't solve a lot of your problems. You still have the basement, yes, we'd fix, the flooding would be fixed, but you would still have, I don't know how many people we have upstairs now, twenty five at least upstairs in that building. You're still not gonna have windows in the basement, you're still gonna have your meeting rooms and everything down there. So it's not solving a lot of those problems. And the, you know, there's some issues, right? That used to be a post office, so there's two large safes in there already. So we we did look at that pretty extensively about three years ago, Tom?
Three, four years.
I think the the final determination there was that if we were gonna do something, we would have to really address where our people are housed because that property is just not sufficient. And we went through exercises of finding another property in Park Ridge.
Correct.
Renting for a period of time. And then that's where it kinda shifted to potentially using Jefferson for that purpose. If it turns out that we are going to move to the Jefferson or any other spot, then I think the recommendation would be to either sell that property for the most you can get for it. And if you don't get enough for it and it it's financially more, you know, beneficial for the district to keep it for other purposes, then, you know, we would, I think we would address that at that time.
Okay, so right now we don't have a plan.
I think I think that property is worth three million dollars, if you ask me. And we could offset and we could offset a lot of some of the costs that we have.
Well, I guess I'm asking, like, what what's the plan for that? Do we sell it and use that money for these renovations or like, I guess, I was just curious what the plan is?
Well, the big difference now though is back then, like three to four years ago, the administration wasn't seriously considering moving to Niles. They were, I mean, as opposed to now where they are seriously considering. And I think before they weren't mentally ready to have, I think they mentioned, you know, the Niles address for the ESC. But now, I think that was one of the things that was preventing them. I think they wanted to stay, I, Luanne remembers that too, they wanted to stay in Park Ridge. So, I mean, it's beneficial now that now they're, you know, open to moving, so that's that's good.
The one benefit of COVID is you can't see my facial expressions.
Only the eyes, Tom, all right. So I I have a, I'm trying to understand the homeschool model. I have a question. So let's take Carpenter. Carpenter is one of our smaller schools. How many first grade classrooms do we have at Carpenter? Is it three?
Uh, we'll have four actually this coming fall, as of right now, as of today. I have four sections of kindergarten at Carpenter next year.
And and I ask about, I ask about first grade because I'm thinking, I'm looking at like Field and Carpenter, really different sized schools. And we're proposing to have five kindergarten classrooms at both of those schools. And I don't, I don't see how that adds up. Like, there's five sections, I imagine, at Field of first grade, but I don't, I don't think there's five sections at Carpenter. So why are we adding then five kindergarten classrooms? I'm trying to wrap my head around that, why it's five at each school and the enrollment at each school is very different.
Well, how many, how many morning and afternoon sessions are at Field right now? Four, two and two? Okay, that would be four classrooms. So that would be the, you would need four full, because now they would be full day. You wouldn't be able to use them in the morning and the afternoon. So now you would need them, you would need all, so if, for instance, Franklin has, I think, two morning and two afternoon sessions, that would require full four room, full, full, four full classrooms on a full day. Because you can't get the same amount of kids in a half a day as you can in a full. So that, maybe that answers your question.
Yes. Okay, I was thinking we use the same class, okay.
How many, how many open classrooms are there at at Lincoln? And how many open classrooms are there at Emerson?
Oh, none at Emerson.
You're asking about open classrooms?
Right, I'm just curious as to.
Yeah, and just, it's a difficult question to answer at middle school because it depends on the period. So depending on the period of day, that's gonna, that number is gonna change.
But if I remember right, Lincoln, at least two years ago, had a significant number of classrooms that were empty.
Lincoln does have more space, certainly than Emerson right now.
And it seems that the options we've been presented with are somewhat suboptimal.
Are somewhat what?
Suboptimal. Because, you know, there's a lot of construction in five schools, there's a lot of landlocked issues. There seems to be, you know, the other option is to put everything at Jefferson, but you're putting kindergarten in one location and you have parents trying to send kids to school. You know, and maybe have a second grade or third grade and they're trying to shuffle. That just, this seems very problematic. Was any consideration given to changing the structure of the district to be a K through four and a middle school being a five through eighth grade? Because that way, if Lincoln has open schools, uh, classrooms and given the site of Jefferson that we have here, it could become an extension of Emerson. So was any consideration given to that solution as a more optimal solution than than what we've been presented with?
So I I don't know if we discussed it with you around, but it definitely, it definitely was discussed. And one of the hurdles was a fourth grader or fifth grader in a school with an eighth grader is not ideal from what we were told, one, one main issue. Emerson would absolutely need every possible inch of of Jefferson. But you'd also want them attached, not detached. You still wanna be able to get to them without having to.
But financially, that could be a similar cost solution from from a financial standpoint.
Well, you still gotta move ESC, you still gotta, you still gotta address that issue.
Right, but you could have it, you could be building Jefferson out as an extension of Emerson with an ESC on top of it instead of building kindergarten classrooms.
Gareth, don't forget about the preschool.
Possibly, but then we've got, now we've got preschoolers and, you know, fourth and fifth graders housed with seventh and eighth graders.
Yeah, did the preschoolers ever wander into the other part of the building anywhere?
If they're in the same building, then you would have that issue. Now they're not, they're in the same, they're on a wing by themselves with.
But that seems to be a smaller problem than people shuffling around town, driving their cars all over the places, buses, busting everything, it just seems to be.
Well, and one, two, not, not a smaller problem.
Other districts do five through.
Not a smaller problem, two different problems. One is a problem for parents and the other one is a potential problem for the actual students themselves for be, having to be in a building with kids who are much older than them.
Right.
The whole structure of elementary and middle school was made to to keep laps of age groups together, not to expand that age group.
You talked about partial demolition of Jefferson. That doesn't mean that you can't, when you partially demolish to build the new classrooms, that you create a separate building effectively when you build those new classrooms.
Yeah, but you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to do that at 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 Lincoln. So you're.
No, but Lincoln has a lot of open classrooms already, so you wouldn't have to do anything.
You're talking about expanding middle school to include fourth, fifth and sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade or fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade. So you're taking a fifth grader and putting them in a school with an eighth grader.
But that that exists in other school districts, I believe.
So the parochial schools.
I don't know, do we have that here?
And CPS and all the parochial schools, it's, you know, preschool through eighth grade.
Well, that's, no, that, in CPS, it's preschool all the way through.
Yeah, yeah, and all the local parochial schools.
In our public schools, in the, what we compare ourselves to around here, is that something that was done anywhere?
So Gareth is correct. I mean, there's all versions of all of the things, you know. This district only has a K one building and those kinds of things. But the norm typically is K five and six eight, especially in our area.
And that actually changed.
And then we used to have just seven, eight before.
It used to be, it used to be. It used to be, it used to be K six, seven, eight.
Yep.
And it grew to six, seven, eight.
Right.
And so what Gareth is recommending is not something out of the blue, but it already happened once. We added sixth graders, now we're just going to be adding fifth graders.
Yep, yep.
You know, and I, I think it's a good out of the box thinking, I really, and I think we'd need, if we need to, if we want to look down that road, it sounds like we definitely need data to see if that, you know, what that would look like if we'd want to.
It, it, from a landlocked standpoint, I concern that, to your point, right? It, it's just, we're getting at capacity in these schools. This way it frees up classrooms, it utilizes classrooms we have in Lincoln, potentially if they're still empty. I don't know, Luan, you might, you might.
And Jason can come over and chime in if I'm wrong, but we would not have enough classes at Lincoln to accommodate picking up that many fifth grade classes in that building. We don't have that much empty space. And as Eric indicated, um, with the model that we use, right? The kids are changing spaces and so at any one time, a space could be being used or not being used.
Your, 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 your scenario kind of puts us back in one of those positions we already have, which is we solve the current situation, but no growth. Because all you're doing is shuffling kids around. You're going to keep the kindergartners at homeschool, use up all those classrooms for kindergartners, move out the fifth graders, push them into the middle schools, have to build additions to Lincoln and Emerson to accommodate those fifth graders. But then if anything happens where we get a rise in, uh, in, uh, what's, uh, students, we don't, we, we then have to start building additions to every school or open up, or we won't even have that benefit of opening up Jefferson because it's already been attached to this. So we, it doesn't address any future needs, it addresses today's needs only. And I personally, I'm tired of addressing just today's needs. I don't want, I don't want any part, D sixty-four school board from now until the foreseeable future to have to deal with space needs.
Yep.
You know, we had plenty of schools in this district that we gave away or sold, sold away to the Park District, to whoever.
Yep. No, and, and I think obviously that involves multiple steps and multiple pieces. And then you're getting into different philosophies. So I don't think we were looking to make that big of a change to the district, but it's certainly something that we can consider.
All right, why don't we go to Luan and talk about the financial component?
Yeah, so I'm actually, I'm going to introduce Elizabeth Hennessy. Um, and she's from Raymond James and several of our board members will remember Elizabeth has presented with us previously. So good to see you again, Elizabeth, and we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, thanks for having me. So I'm going to give you a quick update on the bond market. It's been quite a two years, starting in January of 2019. Interest rates really started to come down. And what we're looking at here are triple A rated municipal market data index, which is a conglomeration of all the largest triple A rated states. And each day on the secondary market, these bonds are priced in. The, um, uh, the yellow line is the thirty year, the red line is the ten year and the purple line at the bottom is the one year. Then the blue line is the ten year treasury. So we hit the, realized we're in the pandemic last March of 2020. And at that time, we had pretty much a, a market panic where investors in municipal bonds thought that a lot of the municipalities were going to default on their bonds because of lack of revenue as the economy shut down. So that caused interest rates to go up over two hundred basis points or two percent. As you can see that big disruption there. The Federal Reserve stepped in as the lender of last resort and calmed the markets down. Interest rates continued to fall and had, we hit a historic all time low in August of 2020. So interest rates were the lowest they've ever been at that point. Since then, we've had interest rates go up with the new administration, a little worry about inflation. The ten year treasury bond in blue has gone up more than the ten year municipal market data index in red, mostly because of the strong demand for municipal tax exempt bonds. This page looks at bond inflows and outflows. And here you can see wherever there's a green bar, you've got more, uh, demand from buyers. When you've got the red bars, those are outflows where buyers, investors are selling municipal bonds. And you can see the big sell push in March of 2020, but it's been very steady demand since then. So that's keeping our interest rates low. And as long as, you know, the Federal Reserve is going to keep the borrowing rate among banks, the Fed funds rate low, I think we're going to see fairly stable markets as we go forward. Just an update on the district's current situation, you only have two bonds outstanding. One is the debt certificates that you issued in 2017. And the other is the 2014 A bonds has a last payment here in fiscal year twenty-two. Twelve one twenty-one will be the last payment on those bonds. Those are working cash bonds paid from that debt service extension base, which I'll talk about in a minute. So just to give you a reference, the district has a debt limit that's set forth in the Illinois statutes and it's six point nine percent of the most recently known equalized assessed valuation. So for District sixty-four, um, the gross debt limit is a hundred and thirty-one point four million. You've got seven point two million of outstanding principal, so a net debt limit of a hundred and twenty-four million, very large. The next limit is working cash bond limit, there's a separate limit for these type of bonds, sixty million. Again, lots of flexibility there. So let's just talk about, you know, what you've heard in terms of the funding plan. Both of the options, three and four, were about twenty-five million. What I'm going to do tonight is just give you some options to think about. You'll also see a ten million dollar option in here too. So we've got several different funding sources. All of these are non-referendum, but the idea is that we're going to provide twenty-five million for your program, option three and four. And then just to mention, the district does have a long-term five-year capital plan and estimates that in the next five years, it'll need approximately fifteen million for additional projects. So we would just want it to be clear that we're leaving you flexibility for future debt if, if and when you need it. All right, so I'm going to start with debt certificates. They're paid from the district's operating funds. There is no separate tax levy for these bonds and therefore no tax increase. The district issued a nine million, two hundred and fifty thousand of debt certificates in spring of 2017 to address critical infrastructure projects in the five schools, including some of the secure vestibules and roofs. The annual payment on these debt certificates is seven hundred and seventy-five thousand a year for fifteen years. So the district was able to find room in its operating budget to fit that in and has done a nice job paying those off so far. So I'm showing you two options for debt certificates, both in the amount of ten million, there certainly could be more. And the payments on the new debt wrap around the old debt and extend with leveled debt payments for fifteen and twenty years. So the key decision in the issuance of additional debt certificates is can we afford the debt service? Can we fit it into our annual budget and our financial forecast? Debt certificates require simply the approval of a resolution by the Board of Education. So here's the non-referendum funding plan options that we're going to look at tonight. And there are more options, but I thought this would be a good starting point to look at some, some ways we could fund the twenty-five million. So the other type of funding we're going to talk about are, uh, bonds paid back from the debt service extension base. And what that is, is it's part of the tax limitation law. In nineteen ninety-four, the district had a bond payment for life safety and working cash bonds, around one point eight million. And under the tax cap, the General Assembly says you can continue to issue bonds and pay off up to one point eight million of principal and interest on those bonds a year. But you can't pay off more than that. Then in two thousand nine, they added CPI to that number. So right now it's up to about two million. So, um, in twenty fourteen, the district issued eight point six million of these types of bonds for the update to Field School. The two options for working cash fund bonds that we're going to look at are in the amounts of twenty-five million to do it all through these limited tax, uh, working cash bonds paid from the debt service extension base. Or in options two A and two B, we're looking at the issuance of fifteen million of these types of working cash bonds. So you see option one, zero debt certificates and twenty-five million of working cash bonds. And option two A, ten million of debt certificates and fifteen million of working cash bonds. And in option two B, um, it's the same, but you've got a different structure that we're going to look at. Okay, I'm starting with the debt certificates and this is for option two A. So this is ten million. And what we're doing is issuing the debt in such a way that we're paying a smaller amount till the old debt expires and then extend the debt, so we're a full fifteen years. And the payments are now instead of seven seventy-five thousand a year, up to one million four fourteen. So this is a fifteen year payback. We like the, the payments to be level so the district can easily budget and know what they have to plan on each year. But, you know, this is an option that the district has to think carefully about. Does it fit in my budget? Does it fit in my financial forecast? It's an extra six hundred and forty thousand a year over what you're currently paying. So that you can see the graphic that shows that clearly on the, the side. Option two B, there we go, is twenty year payback. So this is a little longer year pay, payback for the debt certificates for ten million. But what it does is it keeps your annual payments lower and perhaps that's more affordable to around one million a year as opposed to one point four million on the fifteen year payback. So here you can see the increased payment a year is about three hundred and fourteen thousand. And then that wraps around and extends for a full twenty years. So that's option B. And when we think about how long we're going to pay back bonds, we think about how long are these improvements going to last? If we're talking about school classrooms, they're going to last at least, what, thirty, forty years hopefully? So that we want to match the life of the asset with the debt we're issuing. Now we're going to talk about the working cash fund bonds that are paid from the debt service extension base. So as of twenty twenty-one, the D S E B is two million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand and it grows by CPI each year. So attached are one option to do all twenty-five million through these working cash D sub bonds and two options for fifteen million that are, combines with the debt certificates for ten million. Each option allows the district additional bonding authority uh, under that debt service extension base in the year twenty twenty-three. So that leaves you room for that additional fifteen million of things that are in your five-year plan should you need to access additional debt. Working cash bonds, in order to issue them, they require a petition period and a public hearing prior to issuance. And just so you know what that petition period involves is the board passes a resolution of intent. It's published in the newspaper once, it begins a thirty-day period. If within thirty days, ten percent of the registered voters were to submit a petition, the issue would have to go to referendum. And that's the legal requirements as well as a public hearing. So in order to issue the bonds in January, February of twenty-two, the board authorization process would really need to start in October of twenty-one. So if you make the decision in June, July to go forward with the project, you know, the engineering and that kind of thing would begin, but we would issue the bonds, start authorizing the bonds in the fall, get you the funds by January. You certainly can pay for any engineering and architecture work that's done before that, but then you'd have the money to go forth and spend in the spring and summer to complete the projects. Here's option one, twenty-five million D sub bonds issued in February of twenty twenty-two. It's a fifteen-year payback. And so you can see we're issuing the bonds, it's in, under the, um, heading twenty twenty-two financing. What we've got in these interest rates, and I should have added, told you this earlier, is we're very conservative. We've added a one percent, a fifty basis point, point five percent interest rate cushion in all of our scenarios. So we think we're, we're conservative and the interest rate, in this case, instead of two point three, three eight percent for fifteen-year bonds would be one point eight five percent or something lower than that. Just to show you how low these interest rates really are today. But again, we're putting a cushion in, in order to be conservative. So this, um, another important point to, to mention, the twenty fourteen bonds have its last payment in the levy year twenty twenty, which pays off twelve one of twenty twenty-one. The district abated the payment on that bond. So between the year twenty nineteen tax year and twenty twenty, taxes for bonds went down by twelve cents. Twelve cents on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home is about a hundred and eleven dollars. So that went down between levy year nineteen and twenty. If you were to issue these bonds, it would then go up by that same amount in twenty twenty-one levy year, which people pay in twenty-two. So we're just looking at the increase on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, so you can see that. It drops down after a couple of years again because we're leaving the district room to issue additional bonds if you need those. So the next option is fifteen million and this is a nine-year payback. So you certainly could do this, um, very quickly and pay that back over nine quick years with that additional room to issue bonds in twenty twenty-three. The impact on the homeowner is the same because we're using that debt service extension base again. The interest rate is sure, is lower on the, on the fifteen year. So that's closer at one seventy-seven with a fifty basis coin, point cushion. That's, gives us a one twenty-seven interest rate. So again, really low cost. So here's a summary. Option one, again, all twenty-five million paid off in fifteen years under the debt service extension base, the working cash bonds. Option two, ten million of debt certificates paid back over fifteen years and ten, fifteen million of working cash bonds paid off over nine years. And you see the interest rates and the paybacks. And then option two B is again, ten million, but the debt certificates are paid off over twenty years. It's got a higher interest rate because it's out for a longer period of time. And then the fifteen million paid back over nine years. So I'll just pause here. There's other options we could do, but I wanted to just give you a feel for different resources you could pull to finance twenty-five million.
So one thing we have been cognizant of when we issue debt or anything like that is we don't want to tie the hands of future boards. So that's why we have not extended the debt out. That's why we have not, Sam's screwing with me. That's why we, uh, don't, we have not issued the debt out as long as we, we could issue it out. But if we take up all of the ability to issue any debt for the next twenty years, something goes wrong with one of the buildings, you know, and you don't have the money in your fund balance at that time. So then, you know, you could have, you know, some really severe issues. But you do have the option for issuing these for longer periods of time. It's just that I've always been very conservative and thought about, you know, the future for the district too.
So before anyone else jumps in, uh, I would, I would like to see for, I, I understand it all because I've gone through it a million times. But it took me nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand times to figure it out. So what I would like to see that would make it easier for, you know, the commoner who doesn't look at numbers, not like some other people here. Which option, or out of option one, two A and two B, how does it, on this chart, it would be nice to see how it impacts the taxpayer. So is there an option here where we don't have to increase taxpayers, what taxpayers pay us?
No.
So every option is going to cost the taxpayer something?
Yes, because it's got the D sub. Yes, because it's got the D sub working cash bonds in it. Because looking at your operating funds and additional debt certificates, those do not impact the taxpayer, but we don't, I mean, and I don't feel comfortable recommending you issue more than 10 million of those.
Right, so that brings me to my second question. Out of these options, how do they rate in category of tying the hands of future boards? Which one, which one gives the future board more flexibility, medium flexibility, less flexibility? Just a quick look for somebody who's just trying to make this decision. And then again, how much more above and beyond what we're already taking from the taxpayer for the current bonds that we have and for the current stuff that we're doing? How much more is this going to add to that?
First of all, you have zero impact for, to the taxpayers for debt in this most recent year because you abated that last payment on your 2014 bonds. So there was zero impact to the taxpayer for the 2020 levy year. So going into 2021, if we re-access that debt service extension base, that's going to be an additional about $111 on a $350,000 home in all three of those for the next year.
So people can understand, last year, there was an impact to the taxpayer?
Yes.
Of how much?
Negative $111. They went, their taxes for debt?
Their taxes went down?
Went down.
By $111.
For debt.
For debt. Now, once we do this, we are going to add that 111 back?
Correct.
And another 111, or just add that 111 back? And for how long were they paying that 111 that they just recently got reduced?
Many years.
Right. So if we would have done this last year, we would have been talking about just continuing their tax bill at the same rate?
Correct.
Not increasing their tax bill. And this is kind of important because me as a taxpayer, I have my tax bill, my tax bill is this, and as long as it doesn't go up, and I'm getting a $25 million benefit to my schools, I'm thinking, this is, this is good value. But if my tax bill is this, and the school board decides they want to spend $25 million, and I don't have kids in the school district, I'm thinking, hey, wait, I don't want to pay another $111 on top of what I'm already paying. So assuming, we never got our, as a taxpayer now, I'm speaking to you, assuming I never got my $111 break for one year, if this would have been resolved last year, I would have just continued for another 15 years.
Or nine years.
Or nine years with a hundred, with an additional $111 annual. So what's $111 times, what's the average amount of years that that 111 would stay?
So the thing is, we've got the 111 for three years, and then it drops down because we've left room for you to do additional debt. But assuming you would need additional debt, talking about your five-year capital plan and things that need to be corrected, theoretically, you would never let that drop down again because you have some capital needs.
So thank you for saying that, and that's where I was leading. That $111 could theoretically go down if we don't ever have to take any more money to do anything, but theoretically, it would just, it would just continue to be $111 on top of, but to be able to do a lot of things that this district neglected to do for 30 years. And that's not only this upgrade in our, you know, for kindergarten, but this upgrade for kindergarten also adds value to our other schools, it also add classrooms, it addresses the, you know, ESC situation, it addresses multiple issues, and we continue to move forward and still have the ability to get more, to do other facility needs that we have that are in that plan, that just, or other needs in general. So we're talking about $111 to each taxpayer, average taxpayer for a period of an additional, is it nine or is it 15?
Well, option one is 15 years.
And option 2A and 2B are nine.
Correct.
And correct me if I'm wrong, anyone smarter than me when it comes to numbers in this room, 1.77% interest. If, I mean, doing this, we might be tripping into the luck of timing and doing a $25 million project at a time where interest rates are really at our benefit. Because if we would have done this five years ago, I don't see that line being anywhere in the twos or the ones.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
You're right. We are in a historically low interest rate environment, and we even have a cushion in all these interest rates, so they're higher than they otherwise would be today.
Now, I'm going to step back because that's where my knowledge ends, and I'm going to let smarter people talk.
Isn't, so you said even at a 50, 50 basis points pushing that, and the, and this, this is only covering 25 million. So when I look at kind of the servicing cost here, you're talking about something just over a million, but I think back in the presentation itself, more of the, sorry, Laura, your presentation, there's also, we can't forget that there's not just a capital improvement cost here, there's an annuity cost for doing all-day kindergarten as well. That's, I think, 1.23 million. And so you're talking about not just $111, you're adding more like $222, and that extra 111 is never going to go away, right? It's only going to go up. So I just want to point that out, Tom. It's not just the 111 to the average median home of 350,000, it's, it's, it's another 111 on top of that that will never go away.
So Gareth, that is correct, that you will have that additional expense with the additional staff, obviously. But remember, we're tax capped, so we cannot levy for more than we're legally entitled to. So that 1.3 million has to fit into the money that we currently have and that we're legally entitled to. So that's, that's where some districts, you know, can't pull this off because they can't add 1.3 million of expenditures within the money that they currently are receiving on their tax levy. But our, our district historically has, you know, done fairly well, but you do have to think about you're adding 1.3 million, and that cost goes up every year with insurance and salaries into perpetuity.
Wait, is that, is that what you were saying, Gareth? You were saying that this is addressing, and what we just discussed was addressing the construction portion of it?
Right.
Where are you getting the additional $111?
It's in the report.
Yeah, it's kind of some.
No, but what, explain, explain what that 100.
Like the additional teachers.
No, I, I, does it just so happen to be the same number?
It's in the ballpark, it's, it's.
That's, that's, I think that's where I was getting a little, it just so happens to be the exact same number as the cost of the.
Looking at the scenarios, you're paying roughly just over a million a year, and, and it happens to be equivalent to what the annual salaries and benefits for staff would cost on page 34, 37, and A2 of the packet. So it's roughly the same.
And what happens then with the costs, it's the opportunity costs, right? If you're putting the money into the full-day kindergarten, there potentially are going to be other things you're not going to be able to do, right?
But that, just to be clear, that cost that you're talking about happens regardless of where we do kindergarten?
That's correct.
It is, it is an additional cost for us to decide to do kindergarten, not, not so much attached to the construction side of it, but just the decision to do whether we do kindergarten or not, before we even get to what building we're going to use or how much money we're going to do to it. So I just want the world that's listening to be clear that those are two different things.
Well, you have to double the number of your kindergarten teachers.
Right, and you would have to do that regardless, whether you do it at Jefferson, whether you do it at, at the local schools.
Anywhere.
So that's like the first question that's, that is asked, is do we want to take on this non-extinguishable debt that's going to be there with us forever before we take on the $25 million debt that we can extinguish and pay for and move on?
And the first one, I wouldn't call it debt, I would call it an expenditure.
Expenditure, I'm sorry, my fault. Now, which opened up a new thing for me. This 25 million doesn't include tables, chairs, furniture, and so on, so we're looking at.
We did figure that in, we had an individual that does furniture do a cost estimate for the classrooms for furniture, and we had about 20,000 roughly, so we figured about 200,000 in additional costs because we already have furniture to outfit, you know, half of the classrooms.
So we're not talking about a huge number?
No.
Still a big number because it's our taxpayers paying it, but we're not talking about a, a number that really changes the game. I'm sure you guys can do a great job saving us 200,000, somewhere on that 25 million, and we're, we'll call it even.
I think also, we didn't want to get into this tonight, but something the board will have to talk about next time is, are we going to charge parents to participate in full-day kindergarten? And, you know, one answer is no, but then that means we have a million-dollar cost that we're just adding on year after year. Another possibility is we only charge them enough money to make that, so that it's always even year after year, or we can charge them a lot to help pay back for all the construction. Now, obviously, some of those ideas are better than others, but we'll talk about that next time as well.
And I know we'll talk about that next time, but charging for, for additional day on top of the half-day that we already gave them for free, I don't even know how that would work. Because let's say, then you'd have to give them the option of not taking the full day.
Correct.
Which would now require us to build more classrooms, because we'd have half-day classrooms and full-day classrooms.
Well, we have to have, half-day has to always be an option for parents. So there could be a year where, you know, this group at this school, they have a group that, you know, needs to do half-day, and then that changes.
So are you saying that if we go full day, we have to offer a half-day option?
Correct.
Or we have to offer a half-day option regardless, but if we go full day, we don't have to offer a half-day option?
You always have to offer a half-day option in the state of Illinois.
I thought the state of Illinois said the requirement was you have to have at minimum a half-day option, or a half-day.
No.
If you do a full day, then you don't have to have a half-day.
No, you still.
So it's the other way around?
Yeah.
Did this, all this taken into consideration?
Yes.
That we have, that we may have some, you know, classrooms half-day and some full-day, and we have enough classrooms for all that?
Yeah. Because also, if you're going to charge parents, then probably a lot of parents are going to choose half-day because they don't want to pay the cost. If you're not going to charge parents, very few people would want to choose half-day because they'd rather just have the full-day program. So that's why that all gets.
I just want to make sure that four classrooms?
Yep.
Or three or two at certain schools is going to be able to accommodate for the flexibility of us having to offer half-day and full-day?
Correct.
Okay.
And wasn't it not many of the districts in the area do charge tuition, correct?
Correct, very, very few districts.
And do any districts in Illinois have a centralized kindergarten location rather than a homeschool location?
Yes.
Do we know if, if that's a lot, or is it just a few?
Actually, my first district, I was a business manager, and we had full-day kindergarten. It was a lower-income district, so they really needed it. And we actually were grade-level centers. So our kindergarten was housed with our first grade and our preschool.
So you had a K through 1 model and then?
And a 2, 3, and a 4, 5.
Is there anyone in our, where we, the, the schools we compare ourselves to have a centralized kindergarten location, just one place for kindergarten?
59.
There, I remember, I remember there being one.
Yeah, District 59 has one, and Schaumburg also has a kindergarten centers, both of those do. And my last district I came from, we were same deal, we went to grade-level centers, so Prospect Heights was all kindergarten students in one location.
So there, the answer to that, I remember the answer being that there were several schools in our, not even in Illinois, in our general area close by here that have that model.
Do we know the reasons for that? Was it similar situation, like landlocked issues or building issues, anything?
The reason we did it in '23 was we saved a tremendous amount of money by going to grade-level centers. And in Mundaline, we had done it pretty much for the same reason.
Okay, so it was more grade-level centers was the focus rather than just?
Yes, but then you have all your kindergarten, but Schaumburg did also build a large kindergarten center, and District 59 has.
There's one district in Northbrook that has kindergarten.
And, and I think the answer that was given to that question the last time, because someone else asked that question, was most districts do it when it's just financially, it, it comes out cheaper to do one building to give their community full-day kindergarten than it does to add on to every single building, plus all the extra space you gain by, by moving your kindergartens out of, for all the same reasons why we're considering it, pretty much.
Okay.
Elizabeth, were you done? I just want to make sure.
I am. There is one last page, which is, I didn't go into these options, and this page is wrong now because we had the General Assembly determine no election on March 15 of '22. The election is now moved to June 28. So just so you know, but if you were interested in going to the voters for something like this, then you wouldn't be using any of your internal funds or possibly less of those. You would be putting a question on the ballot, and the next opportunity to do that would be June 28 now of 2022.
Which one of our options obligates us to do this?
None of the options I've showed you obligate you. I looked at all non-referendum options first. I just put this up in case you wanted to, anyone had questions on that.
So that could just be an advisory referendum?
No.
Can you put advisory, can school boards put advisory referendums?
You can do advisory referendums for anything.
Elizabeth, do you mind just using the microphone?
You can do advisory referendums for anything, but it would be, it's just, if you're going to, in my mind, if you're going to do an advisory referendum, why not do a whole referendum? Because if the advisory comes back, no, and then you go ahead, you've got issues, you know what I mean? So anyway, you can put anything you want on the ballot. If you do a real referendum, though, it has to have language that's approved by bond council that, but you could certainly describe everything you would like to do within that question.
So to clarify for the public, just because your options don't require us to go to referendum, we can, as a board, can still vote for it to go to referendum?
Right.
And we can do it in multiple ways. We can do a full-blown referendum that would require us to obligate ourselves to the decision, or we can do an advisory referendum, which we can ignore what our people say and do the exact opposite of what they voted on, which is just not really advisable, but we have that option if we wanted to.
Or you could ask them if they wanted a tuition model versus a non-tuition model.
Right.
There would be other questions you could ask.
As an advisory situation.
Wouldn't necessarily be yes or no, it's like, which model do you prefer?
But that's kind of what our survey did, I mean, that was sort of the point of the survey. Sort of, sort of had that data.
Yeah, it was a thousand, well, it's actually 1,032 people, it's not that far less than what, who actually votes.
But it represents a lot of the people with young children.
How many, how many people did, took your survey?
I think it was 1,300.
And how many people voted in this last election? I don't think we're too far off.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying, I mean, it's just.
But.
And the timeline, I think, too, even for an advisory referendum, we just have to think about that, you know, what that adds to then the timeline with construction.
And the resolution deadline would also shift by three months or so as well?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, how about any more financial-type questions for Elizabeth?
As always, if you think of additional questions, email Eric, and we'll get the answer for you.
Yeah, so the other thing I was going to say is, the board has definitely given us several things to bring back next time, but are there, is there anything else that you either have a question about or would like more information on in preparation for next time? Obviously, you can contact me outside of the board meeting, too, but just while everybody's here, I thought I'd ask.
I want some information on if we did tuition, where would we get the number? What would that be, I mean, because a lot of people, I paid for full DK for my older two, so I know what that cost me at the Catholic school, I know what daycare cost me. So I just wonder if we're half that or less, then, or if we're the same, then that sort of changes how people would perceive it.
Yeah, so we've priced them out, and yeah, we'll show that to you next time.
Oh, that's next time, okay.
You know, if we charge this much, this is what it would be, if we charge this much, this is what it would be, and, you know, to go through those options and.
And what EDK currently costs, because I don't think I know that, okay.
Now, I'd like to, now that we've got a general idea of how this works and what it would potentially cost our taxpayers, I think we should put on our agenda, or for us to discuss, how this board wants to proceed referendum or no referendum, how this board wants to proceed advisory referendum or full-blow referendum or no referendum at all, find a way to pay for it, and taxpayers, you know, are going to trust the fact that they voted the right people in. I think we should, instead of investing any more time in moving forward with it, we should at least know how this board is going to move forward with the process. Because if we all agree to go referendum, then I believe. Because if we all agree to go referendum, then I believe that's the first step, right? We have to start that process very quickly because a referendum takes some time and draw it up the right way, make sure the question is posed, you know, the way we want it to be posed and that the community understands it and get that process ready. And then that also changes how we move forward with spending money on Studio GC and everybody else, because if the referendum comes, if we all agree as a board that we want to go ref, full blown referendum, if it comes back a big fat no, we want to limit how much time and effort we have, we're paying these people to put in to a project that might be a big fat no.
Yeah.
So I think we as a board have a lot of discussing to do so that we can, you know, get to that step before we invest any more time into this.
Yes, I would also say that overwhelmingly, if districts had the option to not do referendum, they would not and most do not. They only go referendum when they have to. Now, obviously, this board could decide to do differently, but you're adding on a lot of layers of components in addition that we wouldn't have to do the other way. But yes, we're going to have to talk about that.
Something this board is going to absolutely have to talk about. It's a, you know, it's a big number.
It is a big number.
It's a huge number and it's a huge, like Gareth pointed out, it's a huge long-term impact for the taxpayers.
It's been such a contentious issue over several years.
And it's been, yeah, it's been, you know, we have a lot of the district that wants it, a lot of the, you know, taxpayers that really don't care about it anymore. You know, you have people who don't have kids in the schools, you have kids who blew past kindergarten, have that in their rearview mirror and aren't really thinking about it anymore. So there, there's a lot of things this board needs to discuss when it comes to that.
And then I just want to mention, so if we do proceed with a referendum, would that then, based on this timeline, push us back to academic year 2024 then for a targeted completion date?
Well, sure. And I think, I hear you, Tom, and I think the question before, do we want to even look at full day kindergarten? I think the board has to get there first, that we want to definitely pursue options three or four.
And I, I think the other thing is, is I'd like to understand the cost, if it would be substantially different for the K, you know, I think will Matt and Lake Forest do that, that middle school five through eight? So I'd like to understand if, if that is a feasible, the price similar option, just because of the, I believe the homeschool is a much more optimal process for K to have the kindergartens in the homeschool. And it seems less disruptive to do only one or potentially two extensions. I, I think the other thing I'd like to understand is maybe it's a, reaching out to our state representatives and state senators, but what's the potential here that the governor and the legislature could actually mandate that we do full, full day? And we end up building something that's not like a tuition model or we rely on something, we could, we could find ourselves in a, in a bad situation if we don't understand the current goings on in Springfield if we, if we ask our legislatures, legislators, you know, what their feelings are, maybe get them on the public record if they're willing to come to a board meeting to help answer our questions.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not guessing they're going to give us a commitment on, you know, exactly one way or the other at this time, but I mean, it's certainly something we can pursue.
If, if, if it was mandated by the state, the only, and we were moving forward with full day kindergarten, regardless of where we do it or how we do it, the only, the only pullback we would have to do is just pull out our tuition if we decided to go with tuition based. And that would be something we, was completely out of our control. So even if we, even if we asked the public what their thoughts were and they said, let's go tuition based to save non-users, taxpayers, the dollars, and then the government says you have to go, you have to have a full day option, well, then we can't charge for it. So then that's, you know, that's, whoever doesn't like that can look way past us and go right, you know, to the person who made the decision. One thing, second thing, I like the idea of exploring a five, six, seven, eight grade model after it was explained to me and knowing that people in our comparable school districts nearby have that model, I would just ask that if we, if we do look at that, we address if doing that is going to increase space at our other schools that we're not going to be putting additions on. So we're going to be putting additions on Emerson or connecting or doing whatever so we can handle future growth in that construction. We have a lot of space at Lincoln, maybe we have to put a small addition at Lincoln. Looks like that Lincoln's not landlocked. We may be able to, you know, increase the size of Lincoln, but what does, how does that leave us with the future of our other five schools? And would that allow us for future growth? Because to me, if we're going to spend 25 million, I want to get the biggest bang for the buck where we're not dealing with this again in the future. So I don't have a problem if it's fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade in one school or, and I definitely prefer homeschool kindergarten, but if it means that, you know, we're going to be doing this dance again 15 years from now or 10 years from now because our homeschools are running out of space and now another board is spending 25 million, then I don't think that's the fiscally responsible decision and we're just going to have to ask parents to deal with having to take their kids to a centralized school. So I, I wouldn't mind seeing all that as well.
And along with Tom said, I think I agree with if we're going to be looking at building out these spaces and ensuring that we're building out so that we can build up if, you know, that becomes necessary. Because if we're going to invest a significant amount of capital in it, we might as well set it up so that we're, you know, ready for the future.
It's, it's such a hard thing though, because if enrollment projections are going to go up and then go down, then there's like, oh, the board had made these extra, you know, possibilities for the second floor and we don't need them now. You know, so it's a, it's a tough dance.
But do the projections for enrollment include the forethought of would full day K drive more enrollment to the district? Does Eric, spoiler alert, do you know that for next?
Yeah, I, I mean, you can make the logical conclusion is, I don't know that I'd have data to be able to show you.
Okay.
That, that certainly makes sense.
I'd personally rather be the guy remembered in history of overbuilding than the guy who underbuilt or sold buildings that cost our district $25 million.
Yeah.
On, on top of the 25 I already spent.
Yeah.
If I spent 25 and some of the rooms are empty, the value of those empty rooms is 500,000.
Yeah.
If I underbuilt and had to spend another 25 million, then I screwed the future taxpayers out of 25 million. So I see the point of the dance, I'd rather be on that side of the dance.
And also, I mean, Tom, the first thing I learned about you when I came on the board is you wanted to have a concrete plan that addressed everything. And so I think we've been very, very careful to consider that I don't want to come back to this board three years from now and say, oops, now we need this. I, I shouldn't be allowed to do that because of this commitment. At the same time, we always have to remember enrollments are projections, you know, and so, you know, we'd have to see, you know, what changes, you know, but yes, your point's valid.
Well, Eric, you said that was a lot of information. I think that was an understatement. Information overload from Lori to Elizabeth to our Studio GC group and certainly we thank the kindergarten exploration committee. So we will, this conversation will be continued in between and then we're at the next meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, do we need a little break? Do we need a five minute break before we get to our policy? Hearing yes, some saying no. We just going on?
Hey, we got, we got two small items left.
Yeah, let's just finish.
Might as well just blow through them and go on.
Okay, let's just finish, okay, all right. I just want to make sure people needed a break. All right, let's go on. Two small items, I heard Tom say, small items, Tom.
[laughing]
So keep that in mind, all right. All right, thank you, everyone. All right, let's continue with our agenda and we have two policies to discuss and then approve if we, if there's a motion. So let's get to our first one.
Denise, could I make the procedural motion to, because I think we have to suspend the policy right first? I think for Tony at the last meeting, he said that if you went ahead, policy two, colon two forty would require two readings, but we can choose to suspend it because we had the discussion last time. So if it's okay, could I move the procedural motion that we suspend policy two, colon two forty for purposes of items? I can get my, back to my agenda here, I think it's items A3 and A4.
Yes, okay, so Gareth has a motion to suspend our policy for two readings as Tony suggested at our last meeting. Thank you, Gareth. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second? And then, do we need a roll call vote then?
I don't. I don't think so.
We don't need that, okay.
Let's do it just to be honest.
Let's do it, let's do it just so we have it. So Phyllis, can you take that?
Waitovich?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Soto?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Seles?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we have suspended that, so now we can look at the, let's first look at A3, policy two, colon, two, three, zero, which is public participation at Board of Education meetings. So let us start here. Eric, did you, were you going to talk about this one? Go ahead.
Thank you. So, you know, unfortunately, something else has now developed since we put it together this way. So there are actually two things on the table tonight for two, colon, two thirty. One is to make the suggested changes as the board talked about to the statement when we welcome public comments in the beginning. But the second piece that this board is going to need to decide is what are we going to do about public comment with email? Is that something that we're going to continue or not? As I shared with you, most districts going back in person eliminated that and that you still need to come to the location if you want to address the board. I also know some districts stopped broadcasting. We've decided, just from what I heard from the board, that we did still want to broadcast so that people can watch at home, but there's the decision of what to do about public comment. If you decide that you no longer want to have that, then it was recommended that we include that here so that we, that stated that we have it. If you, sorry, if you are going to do it, then we have to make sure that it's included here. If you're not going to do it, we don't have to vote, but it was recommended that you do so that there's just an official acknowledgement of the fact that we're no longer going to do that. So I guess one part is about the language here, but the second part is what does the board want to do about email public comments?
How do we address it if we want to allow it for now, but we want to have the right to terminate it at our leisure?
Okay, we could change the policy now and then change it later.
Because our policy right now just allows for in-person comments. It was just the pandemic, which we had the email comments, public comments.
So the policy right now disallows the, 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 the public from emailing us comments the way it's written?
It does not allow.
It disallows, it does not allow.
So if you are going to allow it, we should add.
So if we want to allow it, we didn't have to change the policy before because we were under.
Correct.
Pandemic rules. But now that we're no longer under pandemic rules because we came back in person, we now have to address that issue.
Correct.
So we have to decide, do we want to allow them to? And if we do, from what I understand, we have to change it to allow for it and then whenever we get to the point where we want to kill it, we have to then bring this back up and change it again.
Correct.
Do we have to put in here somewhere that we have the right to change it again or we just have that right anyway?
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure you have that right anyway, but we don't.
And is there, if we do agree that we want to keep it, do, can we put in here that we temporarily want to keep it so that whoever reads it understands that our intention wasn't for it to be permanent?
Yeah.
That our intention was to allow it? I'll, I'll explain why I'm going this way. My feeling is we allow public comments to continue via email for a period of time for transition, for people to get used to coming back. There's still a lot of people who aren't vaccinated, who don't feel comfortable coming here, just for many reasons. We're not out of COVID yet. We might feel that we are, we may feel that we're all good and rip masks off and party, party, all good, but there's still some elements to, and there's still certain people that feel completely different than that. Some people feel that it's still right in the middle of, that it can get worse any minute. So I feel that there's, there might be somebody out there that would benefit from an email to us during a meeting. But at some point, I would want to end that. At some point, I wouldn't want that to be a permanent thing.
So long term, you'd rather see public comments in person, but still for the short term, accepting email, right?
That's how I feel.
Okay, yeah, so what, what do other folks think on public comments?
I'm on board with that.
You're on board with that?
Short term.
Okay.
For transition.
Yeah, I agree.
My feeling is that there's a lot of parents and with young families who may not be able to get a babysitter or may not be able to participate and, you know, to come here in person and I think having remote participation as broadcasting, I think that is, it, it, it just makes them, the more participation in local government that we can encourage, the better. I, I would have a concern if they write War on Peace and we, we need to hold people to the three minutes even if it's being read out. So I think we need to craft a policy that would, in my eyes, would, would be equitable to those people who, who may not be able to get here. So, so my, I, I would see it continuing and as far as I'm concerned, in perpetuity, if we can set it up and write it in the right way.
So you're looking at more of a long term for those reasons? And maybe there needs to be similar to the three minute speaking limit, a word limit or some kind of, and the policy committee.
So this might not go over popularly with everyone, but I love the idea of giving people an opportunity to type us an email from home for perpetuity because it's easier. However, I've sat at meetings where we've had hours and hours of three minute conversations on very hot topics and allowing people to give their three minutes from home on very important topics of that nature can quadruple that and maybe a hundred times that because it's very easy to not commit to come to a meeting on a hot topic and just shoot out an email, a three minute email. And now we're, we, we may find ourselves, and I'm never the person to complain about a 19 hour meeting or leave at three in the morning because after nine o'clock, my family's asleep, I'm on my own anyway. But it's something that we, we as a board should at least consider when we're drawing this.
And there, there might be a, a way to write the policy that says if there is an extraordinary amount of emails that we consider publishing them on, in the board website and know, and, and take a vote in the meeting to do that rather than read them all aloud because they would have to come in ahead of time. So, so there could be a way to write a policy around that to cover that sort of scenario.
I'd be in for something like that.
Okay.
Rebecca, what do you think?
So part of the reason that we wanted to adjust this is because it was too long. So now, with the policy was too long as it was written. So if we have to add another four sentences about the email, then we're, once again, we're unrolling a scroll at the board, beginning of every board meeting. I'm, I have no problem with the emailing continuing and then I think we could just say we'll put it on the agenda in six months, nine months, a year, whatever we're going to do to see if we want to keep the policy this way. I think the shortest way to do it would be to say, if we're going to do that to add that you can email to whatever address, probably would have to add something that says you can't guarantee they'll all be read, but then once again, we're really long. So I don't know how you do that unless you put it into the policy and not the written statement, but then it's on the agenda.
So I, I don't know, I mean, are we thinking, I think, I think we're talking about two different things, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe Eric, so Rebecca's thinking we're going to have to add to that public comment statement to include, right, the, the email verbiage?
Yeah, no.
And I don't think you were thinking that.
We don't have to.
No, we don't.
So I think this was two different issues. So I think the one is the accepting email, public comments. Where are you on that?
I have no problem with accepting the email, I just think that rather than, we don't have, I don't think we have to say even that it's temporary, we'll just agree that this will be something that either the policy committee will do or that we will revisit six, nine, 12 months and just, you know, make a note that there, we're going to look at it again.
If we accept, if we accept emails, do we have to read them?
So I did just get an update that we can say, this is what the policy is and we put a sunset date on it. And you know, whatever it is, three months, six months, and then if we're getting to that and the board wants to extend it, then we'd have to change that.
Now, the question, if we do accept emails, we're obligated to read them.
Right.
During the meeting. So we can't.
Except for Gareth's exception, but yes.
So unless we put an exception in there that says we're not obligated, if it's an email, if you come here in person, we're obligated to hear you and you, you, you have the right to step to the podium. But if you choose to email, we have the right to not read it?
No.
I think we're, I think we're going to put ourselves in a real.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No.
Pickle.
I think, you know, like for instance, remember that one night when the parents came out to talk about whether we're going back to school or not? And there were just so many that what we could do is we could take that collection and put them online in general so everybody sees it. But we wouldn't want to do that regularly. We should really be addressing the comments as they come in.
So, but how do we address what Gareth said? If it gets past twenty email comments, could we put that right in the policy?
So you don't have to put it in the policy?
Oh, we don't.
It's just something we could do at any point if we felt that we needed to do it.
We could craft a policy.
When it comes to email correspondence, we have the right to stop reading them and say, we're going to publish them for anyone to read at your leisure.
Yes, but.
But we don't have the right to do that to someone that steps up here. If a million people step up here, we're obligated to, to hear every millionth person.
Correct.
We're not, we, we can't say to them, well, how about we just put you guys in a, in a room and you guys record what you want to say and we'll publish it?
Right.
But we do have the right to do that with emails?
But again.
We may want to.
It's under the idea that there are so many that it would take us till four in the morning to be able to get through all of these. So because that, we're going to go ahead and post it online.
If we have the right to do that, then I think it addresses the whole thing.
And, and Tom, we could write the policy in a way that the board could decide at that meeting, they could, it could be by a board vote, they decide to publish them instead or something like that. If, if they became so onerous that, 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 that board felt like we're going to be here all night just reading. Because at the same time, if people, you know, there, there is a little bit of a difference. We're giving them the opportunity to listen in on Zoom and we want them to participate. But if the participation becomes too onerous, that, that we can, you know, they write in it, we can read it.
I'm go with that.
And, but, I mean, let's remember they're participating as public commenters. It's still our meeting. We're not having, you know, a town hall discussion. It's still our meeting, but it's the public hearing the public comments. And I, you know, if we do decide to do email comments, I think we should have a timeframe, you know, twenty-four hours before the meeting. It can't be, you know, weeks before the meeting because our agenda is not posted until forty-eight hours. Let someone think about it and here's my comments if it's on an agenda item. You know, some parameters on there. Carol, what do you think?
Yes to allowing email comments. And then I just wanted to point out another policy that the committee might want to look at that's related. It's two colon one forty. It's communications to and from the board. It already provides for emails sent through the electronic link to be included in the meeting packet.
All right. Sounds like we're giving the policy committee some work. Gareth and Phyllis, you're on. So, um, okay.
I just don't want to be here all night, like Tom said, like till two in the morning, reading emails. I mean, if it's that important to you, then we have one, one meeting a month. You have a month to find a babysitter, come in, make your peace and be done. I don't know.
So are you leaning towards not doing email comments?
If we come up with, I'm okay with doing them if we come up with something reasonable and agreeable that's legal, that we're not going to get ourselves in trouble to, to listen to them. I'm fine with that. But I don't want to be reading two hundred emails on a hot topic like, remember our auditorium got taken down and it was full? I mean, I don't want to be in that situation and be here all night long selfishly.
No, no, no. I think it's, okay. So it sounds like the board is interested in keeping the email comments at least for a period of time. You know, until maybe it's that sunset policy, as Eric said.
Yes.
And the policy committee can draft some parameters around what that would look like.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So now we're good on that. Okay. So now we have the verbiage part, right? All right. So this is the, and maybe we should take a motion here on the agenda item, since it's an action item. Anyone want to make that motion?
I move that the Board of Education Committee Consolidated School District sixty-four, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois. Approve the revisions to board policy two colon two thirty, public participation at Board of Education meetings and petitions to the board as presented and attached.
A second? Anyone have a second?
Second.
All right. Rebecca had the motion. Nikki had the second. So we have the verbiage for the public comments, policy added to our agenda. Any conversation on that? Any discussion?
I know Tony had a few edits last time. Does this reflect those, Rebecca?
I think it does, right? Because it says, we ask that you refrain. I think that was the important change.
Okay.
Yes. Anyone else have any other edits or changes? All right. We like that it's shorter. So thank you, Policy Committee, Carol and Rebecca. We're on that team to formulate that. All right. Sounds like we are ready for a vote.
All right. Little?
Yes.
Selas?
Yes.
Waitovich?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Pearl?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. So this will be our new language at our June twenty-fourth meeting. All right. All right. Moving on to our next policy discussion, and this is the pandemic policy. So why don't we, I don't think, we've talked about this a lot. So I don't think there's, why don't we maybe take the motion and then we can get to some discussion?
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District sixty-four, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the revisions to board policy four colon one eighty, pandemic preparedness, management and recovery as presented and attached.
Is there a second?
I second.
Phyllis has the second. All right. How about any discussion?
I, okay. So I just want clarification. So the last part, given the dynamic nature, the superintendent shall periodically review and approve any significant amendments to the plan and present to the board for adoption. So just, just for my clarification, then the board, does, does the, at what discretion level does the superintendent? I guess my concern, and I, I'm, I'm in support of this and I do want to vote on this, but I'm, is this one of the situations where the board could overrule the superintendent's decision to close even in light of public health guidance? In theory, yes.
I mean, probably Tony should weigh in, but I would say the board always has, you know, the right to be able to overrule these. So I think that that would come at any time. I just don't know if Tony would add some things about the fact that, you know, you're going against what the state is recommending. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Otherwise, I, 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 so I support this policy change, but I, I just want to make sure that there's significant protections for public health guidance that should, I, not that I anticipate there being another pandemic of this scale in the next, I shouldn't say anything to jinx myself, but you know, if a board in theory were to vote against public health guidelines, that concerns me, that the board would have the power to keep schools open in light of public health guidance, advising them not, you know, to go to a remote or hybrid situation.
They're also allowed to suspend our policies too. So even if we pass this, it's still, you know, it's something we could suspend.
So the, the, yeah, the way I look at it is regardless, the, the, we can't write anything in here that prevents us from doing it because then we got to give somebody the power. So unless we write in here that we're giving the superintendent that power and we have no way of changing that, which is, in my opinion, losing checks and balances. This way we have checks and balances. We have a superintendent who tries to convince us, you know, hopefully we don't have an entire rogue board. We just have one, you know, rogue person that we can convince that they're, you know, going the wrong direction with this. But, you know, who knows? I don't know. I'm kind of worried about that because checks and balances, there's, this is something that really needs that. What I don't understand is the superintendent shall approve and present to the board for adoption a remote and blended remote learning plan. What's the superintendent approving? Who's putting, who's putting together the plan for the superintendent to be approving it? If the superintendent's the one putting together the plan, he's not approving it. He's presenting it. Unless someone else is, 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 is putting together the plan and now you're approving it. So I'm not quite sure how that language works with that. Cause I thought you would be putting the, the plan together based on the recommendations of Illinois and the government.
So, so Jones, Samantha, is there a reason we can't hear Tony? Like, I thought he was going to participate. Because I, I'm just getting little texts from him. He's obviously listening, but I'm just trying to decipher small words instead of hearing a full explanation.
Just like the email public comment will be.
Could I just, while, while we wait for Tony, while we try to connect, maybe because I wrote this, the way I, I wrote this was, 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 I took the press policy and the press policy, I believe, is, is word for word through the last sentence, which is where Nikki, I think you, you, your question came in. And, you know, I, I think that wording was directly from press that, that you're questioning. I just took it. So I, I think they maybe had their reasons and, and to do it that way. But at the end of the day, the idea is, is not, you can't stop a rogue board through a policy. But the idea is not to start, the idea of the purpose of this is not, is that the board takes responsibility so that the political responsibility is there with the board and we're seen to stand up and say to the community, we, we support the superintendent and we've taken an affirmative public meeting stance in that process to do that because we believe the superintendent, he's interpreting all the, the laws and the guidance that's coming out of the state of Illinois. He's got little option or, you know, he has these options. He's made these choices. This policy is about. It's going on record as a board to support the superintendent.
Okay. So.
Can you, I'm sorry. This is Tony. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Tony.
Can you hear you, Tony?
Okay, great. I'm sorry. I didn't know I was supposed to call in yet. I was just following on the live stream.
We may, we may not need you, but just, hang on. Okay. So Gareth, from what your explanation is, now the, the approved part makes a little sense to me because we're trying to, it sounds like we're trying to present to the world that the superintendent is doing this, giving it thought, and then just bringing it to us for adoption, which still leaves the board a small window to say, we're just not going to adopt it. We need more discussion on it. We want to talk about this more. We don't feel that, that, you know, we're ready for something like this or, but it does give future boards and this board the opportunity to say, we're not going to adopt it yet. And then it moves on to, or we sit and discuss it for eighteen hours straight until we come to a resolution because something like that would require an immediate decision, in my opinion, if it's a pandemic situation. So this board and every future board just has to be ready for a really, really, really long meeting where they all can somehow find a way to convince each other to adopt something that they're all comfortable with. So that, now that you've explained it, I understand the word approved because it kind of gives a different message. It gives a message that we still want the superintendent to be the one making these decisions and contemplating them because best suited with all the information they've gathered. And really, hey, future boards, your job is not to trump, not to, you know, overpower and take control, but to adopt what the recommendation is. But you still have that little window to really, you know, checks and balances again.
Yeah.
Because you, you may end up with a superintendent, you might be gone. And we may end up with a superintendent who comes to us with a proposal where it says, the governor tells us to close, and that superintendent says, no, we're not closing. My recommendation is we're going to stay open. Then the board needs to have the, the provision in there where they're not going to adopt the, 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 the request or the, you know, the, the presentation because they want to close and go into remote. So I, I think it's actually pretty well-written now that I was.
Right. And those two words are from the state statute, which is where the IASB got them and then, which is how they ended up in, in this version.
Oh, and any other questions on the policy on the, because, you know, this is written and we didn't have this formal vote, but I feel like the process the board used during the pandemic was very similar to this, except the official vote. All right. Are we ready to vote? All right. I think so. Phyllis, let's do it.
All right.
Can I just check? Did we have a motion on this one?
I, I read the motion.
Oh, you did? Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Gareth had the motion. Phyllis had the second.
Okay. Thank you.
But thank you. I appreciate you checking up on me.
Waitovich?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Soto?
Yes.
Pearl?
No.
Little?
Yes.
Selas?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. All right. Motion carries. Let us finish up. Our last agenda item is the approval of the personnel report. So let us, Joel, was there anything you want to say about the personnel report?
Uh, no, this is just, annually, you'll find that this time of year, we typically have a very long personnel report because it includes most of the hiring for our summer school. That'll start here in about a little over a week. So that's typically, like I said, this is probably one of the longest ones you'll see and just giving you a little background of why.
All right. Anyone have any questions for Joel on the personnel report? All right. If not, why don't we take a motion?
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District sixty-four, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the personnel report dated June third, twenty twenty-one, noting that the personnel report is based on the recommendation of the superintendent and not upon the board's direct knowledge regarding any of the specific individuals selected for employment.
Second.
Rebecca had the motion. Gareth had the second. Any discussion?
Selas?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Waitovich?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Motion carries.
All right. All right. How about any new business from the board?
How the, if the Niles library cuts affect any of the programs we have going with them? Cause I know one of the things they want to get rid of is outreach to schools.
Thought about that. Good question. I saw that today.
So I don't know if we, what, what current partnerships we have with them, what's on the chopping block, like what the details are of that because it'd be kind of good to know how it affects us and our kids that live in Niles. That's a great question.
Yep. I can certainly give it to you.
All right.
So this, Raymond James, financing update, can you include this in the online packet or is there a reason it wasn't? Is there anything that's.
Julianne, is there any reason why we couldn't put this online as well? Elizabeth Hennessy's report? Okay. Then yes, Carol. Thank you.
Okay. So we can get that added to the board report. Thank you, Carol. Good call. Anything else for new business?
Oh, and then, I don't know. Do you guys have a policy committee date picked out yet?
No, no. But how frequently did you and Rebecca meet when you were the policy committee?
Whenever they dropped press.
Four or five times a year.
Four or five times. Yeah.
But based on tonight's discussion, I was going to reach out to Phyllis and Gareth tomorrow and get some discussion.
Right. Okay. So the policy committee will meet in our next meeting. Our regularly scheduled meeting is Thursday, the twenty-fourth. Same place. It's nice to be in person again. And so we will see everyone then. Right. Is there a?
But Denise, so could I request that the board go into closed session following the meeting under two C one to continue talking about the conversation we had prior and for two C two to talk about contract negotiations?
I, I move that.
Okay. So we have a.
Second.
All right. We have an approval in a second. So the board will go into closed session.
I think they have to vote.
Vote to go. Okay. All right. So let's vote to go into closed session. This is voting to go to close, not here. All right. Go ahead.
Little?
Yes.
Waitovich?
Yes.
Soto?
Yeah.
Pearl?
Yes.
Selas?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Kennedy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So the board is now going into closed session. It is Thursday, June third.